Okay, my apologies for the delay. We were having a hard time making quorum there. But I believe we have it. Dave Loomis, can you hear me all right?
I'm here, ready to go.
Okay, all right, great. Appreciate you being here, Dave. Okay, with that, we will call to order tonight's Missoula Consolidated Planning Board for Tuesday, August 6th, 2024. It is 6:17 PM. And with that, we will do a roll call.
Roll call of vote, Lynn Davis. Derek Canwisher. Derek is absent. Shane Morrissey. Toon Pham. Toon is absent. Josh Schrader. Josh is absent. Dave Loomis. Peter Benson. Peter is absent. Rick Hall.
Here.
Sean McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have five regular members in attendance. We have made quorum.
Great, thank you. Okay, and it looks like we're deferring July 30th meeting minutes to August 20th. Is that correct? Okay, all right. So, we don't have to worry about approving our minutes, which brings us down to public comment on non-agenda items for... So, for all the folks that are here in-house or online, this is an opportunity to speak about something outside the agenda. So, if you're here to talk about one of the subdivisions that we're here for tonight, or the rezone, please hold your comment. This is for things outside of tonight's agenda. So, with that, I will open up public comment for non-agenda items, and staff will throw up instructions on the screen for anybody at home who needs to call in separately. And if you need to call in separately, you can call 406-272-4824. Conference ID is 127489322. Star 5 to raise and lower your hand, and star 6 to mute and unmute yourself. And we'll just take a minute here to see if anybody joins us online or in-house. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. You guys see anybody online? Okay, not seeing anybody for public comment on non-agenda items. We're going to go ahead and close that and move on. So, there are no staff announcements, but before we jump into public hearings, I just want to let folks know that we're going to make a little adjustment to our agenda. Our last line item for tonight, communications and special presentations, I think we're going to go ahead and postpone that, given our difficulty reaching quorum, the length of tonight's possible meeting, and it just seemed like a little wiser move to go ahead and postpone that to a later date. So, just to let board members know and staff that I might not have communicated, we're going to go ahead and, I think, move communications and special presentations to a later date. So, with that, we will move into our public hearings, and we are starting with the Aspire Phase subdivision and Dave DeGrand, Land Use Supervisor with the city. Go ahead, Dave. Dave, sorry.
Thank you very much. It's nigh on.
All right. Third try. Good evening, folks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dave DeGrand, right with the City of Missoula Development Services Office. Okay, and I'm going to be presenting on the Aspire subdivision. I have a question for our board members. Well, actually, before I get started. So, I'm also here with... There are other city staff available. Troy Monroe and Tracy Freshour with the city's Public Works and Mobility Department are available online to ask, answer questions regarding sewer, water, streets, sidewalks, other infrastructure-type improvements. I saw that Shane Stack, who's the County Public Works Director, is online, and Nathan McLeod, who is with the City Parks and Rec Department, is also available online to discuss how the parks in the Aspire subdivision might be managed over time. So, I wanted to get that out there. Let me share my screen. It's not sharing now, is it? Oh, you are, excellent. All right. So, board members, is there anyone here tonight who was not at the previous or initial Aspire subdivision hearing?
I was not.
Okay.
This is Shane.
Okay, Shane, well, thanks. Then, what I'll do is I'll go through the presentation again. I will try to abbreviate it. It's quite lengthy. I'll try not to, you know, I'll try to just hit the high notes, but there are several moving parts to this project, so I'll have to hit those details for the benefit of members of the public and also board members. So, this is a continuation of the public hearing, and tonight, board members, I'm looking for 10 motions, and they have to do with a rezoning ordinance, variance requests, and the preliminary plat application or the subdivision. So, you're making a recommendation to the Missoula City Council. Planning Board does not have a role in annexation and initial zoning of the property. Under Montana law, that goes straight to city council. But the property is currently outside of city limits. You can see the red star on the map. In yellow, so this is based on... This is a map from the city's annexation policy. And in yellow are areas that are already within the city limits. In green are areas that are in...
Dave, your slides aren't moving forward.
Yeah. Yeah. That's interesting, okay. Let me see here. Apologize for the technical difficulties.
For some reason, it allows me to move your slides forward, which is really bizarre. If you can't seem to, I guess I can.
And me too.
Very strange. Let's see here, how do I...
Wait a minute.
I think I'll be able to do it. One second. Cassie, that might be best, if you can do that.
Sure, just tell me one.
Just give me one more try here. I think I got knocked out of the meeting, or knocked myself out of the meeting. And Alicia, can you make me a presenter again, please? There we go. Okay, and it does appear to be pretty small on the screens. I wonder if we can minimize the team's participants. Would it be possible to exit out of that for a minute? Good to go? All right. So, I mentioned already, the planning board will vote on 10 motions tonight, having to do with rezoning ordinance, not the initial zoning to RT 5.4, but the addition of the RT 5.4 slash neighborhood character overlay for the Aspire subdivision, eight variance requests, and also the Aspire preliminary plat application. I was on to annexation. So, the property is not within the city limits currently, but it is within the city's preferred annexation area. So, in green, in the green shade, is annexation area A. That's where development largely meets the guidelines for annexation. So, this is an area that the city has considered annexation. There's a delayed annexation agreement until 2034 for all the area in East Missoula that's on City Water and Sewer. It could be longer than that. There's no hard deadline here, but it's at least 2034. However, landowners can petition to enter into the city limits, which is what has happened in this case. The property is located adjacent to the Clark Fork River to the east, Interstate 90 to the south, and existing residential development. It's single-family and two-family development to the north and the west. The property is accessed from Waterside Drive, which is on the north side, and Summer Street at the southwest corner. Those are both city... Sorry, county-maintained roads. This map shows existing conditions. On the left side, it's a topographic map or a slope map. Green shows area that is of minimal slope, 0 to 10%. So, you can see that the vast majority of the property is relatively flat. In fact, the top-right photo looks west from along the river, near the river. You can see that it consists of pasture grasses. It's largely flat. There are a couple of areas of slope along the west side. There's an old... What we found out at the last meeting was a trolley bed, and on the east side, it slopes down to the river a little bit, but otherwise, it's largely flat. There is riparian vegetation along the east side, along the river, in good shape. It's largely pasture grasses up until then, and there is a narrow floodplain along the east property boundary. Down by the river, no development is proposed within the floodplain. Property has historically been used for agriculture, irrigated grazing land, and pasture land. And this is really the heart of the proposal. 100 and... Upon annexation into the city limits, an initial zoning to RT 5.4 residential. There are 182 lots proposed, 172 of which are single-family, and then 10 multifamily down along the southern boundary. Along the east side, there are... Well, there are two big parks. One along the east side, that you can see outlined in green with some trail connections from the streets over to the park. The park would contain a new trail and is proposed to be dedicated to the public and managed by the City of Missoula Parks and Recreation Department. Along the west side, there is a new park as well that would abut the existing Canyon View Park, and there's talk between the city and the county to merge those at some point or manage them together, whether it's through a park districts, a parks district, or some other means. So, ongoing discussions there. The property would be served by City Water and Sewer. There are stormwater plans that have been submitted, where stormwater is planned to be contained on-site. All of the streets that you see include travel lanes, parking lanes, sidewalks, street trees, et cetera, which would be installed by the developer and then ultimately maintained by the city, dedicated and maintained by the city. And then, there is also an off-street... Or, sorry, an off-site improvement, which is a water main that would have to be upgraded. I believe it's in Phase 3 in order to maintain fire flows off-site. The proposal is to develop the lots in six different phases over approximately a 10-year period, starting with the light blue, which includes some single-family lots and also the riverfront park, as well as a road connection up to the north and then progressively from there. The last phase is proposed to be the multi-dwelling phase in yellow, shown on the screen down toward the south. This is the future land use map, or a future land use map, from the city's growth policy. The city growth policy recommends land use of residential medium density, which means 3 to 11 dwelling units per acre. And associated with that land use designation are four different zoning districts: RT 10, R8, RT 5.4, and R 5.4. The developer has requested city council to grant the RT 5.4, which would happen upon annexation, along with the annexation process. And incidentally, the county growth policy land use element, which is their... Yeah, it's the growth policy essentially for this area, also recommends a land use designation of residential. Current zoning in the county is residential, and this provides for a range of small-scale housing options that reflect the traditional character of the existing residential neighborhoods with the intent of promoting compatible infill development. Land uses that are allowed are agriculture, homes, daycares, community residential facilities, a few commercial uses, things like that. The maximum density under the current zoning is six dwelling units per acre. At the last hearing, I misspoke. I said it was over eight. I was incorrect. So, the... Just to make the record clear, the maximum density in the county zoning is six dwelling units per acre. The proposed zoning, again, is RT 5.4 with a neighborhood character overlay. And so, what is an overlay? An overlay is additional requirements that are lain essentially on top of the base zoning district. So, there are additional requirements. And overlays function in conjunction with the base zoning district. Overlays are a geographically defined area that are intended to provide continuity united by a physical development or architecture. They must create an identifiable setting, character, and association, and have to be at least five contiguous acres. The big thing really about overlays is they provide flexibility. It's a tool. It's kind of like a planned unit development in a way that's intended to provide for flexibility. So, here are the key differences between the base RT 5.4 and the additional overlay that's proposed by the development team. There aren't that many differences, frankly. They both have a minimum area per unit on average of 5,400 square feet, so the density is the same. The maximum achievable units is 284 dwelling units either way. So, the density doesn't change. But what does change is that the overlay would permit multi-dwelling buildings on 10 lots along the southern portion of the property. The base RT 5.4 doesn't allow multi-dwelling units. They allow... The base district allows detach homes, lot-line homes, two-unit homes, and two-unit townhouses. And the other key difference is the setbacks would be slightly reduced, building setbacks. Instead of 20 feet in the front and rear, 10 feet is proposed in the overlay. And instead of 7.5 feet for side setbacks, a five-foot setback is proposed. And then, finally, a little bit more lot coverage is proposed under the overlay in the front. It would allow more area for parking. So, here are the criteria for a neighborhood character overlay. I mentioned them already, but to go through them one by one, the area must possess urban design, architectural, or other physical development characteristics that create an identifiable setting, character, and association. And so, staff is found, as illustrated or described in your staff report, board members, that this area would provide a new cohesive, geographically distinct neighborhood. Things like curb and gutter along the streets, treed boulevards, and sidewalks are different from most of East Missoula. It would create a different setting. Two new public parks are proposed, as I mentioned earlier, that would kind of frame the development. And there would also be reduced setbacks to allow buildings to be located closer to the street and closer to each other. So, it's more of an urban residential density as opposed to a suburban one, and also, there would be a mixture of homes, one and two-family homes, as well as multi-dwellings. And then, finally, the area must be at least five contiguous acres in size, and of course, this is a 35-acre property, so that criterion is met. So, the rezoning criteria that are typical for rezonings that you... That board members see are listed here, and there are quite a few of them. I'm going to probably not go through every single one, but again, this applies, these criteria apply, because they're detailed in your staff report. So, they... But the first one is probably the most important, whether the zoning is made in accordance with the growth policy. And again, the growth policy map indicates that this area is planned for residential medium density, which means 3 to 11 dwelling units per acre. In this case, the proposed density falls right squarely within that at 7.1 dwelling units per acre, in compliance with the growth policy. The overlay also complies with the recommended land uses and density of development, residential land use, and also density of development. And then, it would also help to achieve several growth policy goals, including those described in the staff report under livability, safety and wellness, and community design. In terms of the other criteria, I'll just very quickly, secure safety from fire and other dangers. The subdivision would be within the city limits, where emergency services, fire, police are available, also nearby hospitals. Fire hydrants would be developed throughout the site in phases, and building permits would be required to promote public health and safety. This is also an area where there's adequate transportation, so it's within the... Or, the Missoula Urban Transportation District. Utility infrastructure is available. No development is proposed with the floodplain, and no natural hazards have been identified on-site. So, we've... This overlay accounts for public health, safety, and the general welfare. One of the items that was discussed earlier at the public hearing was schools and the impact on schools. And the development team was in contact with the Missoula County School District earlier in this process, and there's a... In the application, there's an email from the former superintendent of schools indicating that he was not concerned with this development and the number of students and bus trips. His email states that the district can accommodate future students over time, because it's a phase subdivision. Let's see. Staff report details an evaluation of the other impacts. At the end of the day, staff has recommended that this rezoning be approved because of compliance with these criteria. And board members, if you'd like to go into them in any further depth, I would be happy to a little later. This is also... There are also criteria for approving a preliminary plat or a subdivision, and we can go into those just briefly here. I've already talked about compliance with the growth policy and the zoning, so won't go over those again, but here are the others before you. And... So, in terms of impacts on agriculture and agricultural water user facilities, again, this property was historically used for irrigated hay production. Almost all the property does contain soil types designated as prime farmland if irrigated. However, under state law and our local regulations, mitigation of impacts cannot be based on the loss of agricultural soils. There are also no other nearby properties that are used for agriculture. Property does contain water rights that are proposed to be transferred to the city and used in part to irrigate the parks. The property is not part of an irrigation district. There are no ditches, headgates, or other water user facilities on-site, and if this property... If the subdivision is approved, no other irrigators would be impacted. And finally, the land is zoned for medium-density residential development. Under impacts on local services, again, city water and sewer would be provided. All utilities are available. Solid waste is available. Solid waste disposal services, I mean, are available. I mentioned the two large parks to be dedicated to the city and managed by City Parks and Rec for the purposes of recreation and also conservation. And landscape boulevards with street trees throughout are proposed. City police and fire have not indicated any concerns. Fire hydrants are proposed, again, to be developed throughout the project in phases. And I mentioned schools, that the application estimates between 50 and 126 new school-aged children. And again, the Missoula County Public Schools superintendent indicates no concerns with this project, given the proposed timeframe and phasing. In terms of transportation, and this has been a big issue, and we've received a lot of comments on this application, and many of them focus on transportation systems in the East Missoula area. Internal streets are proposed to be developed by the developer, streets and alleys, that is, and dedicated to the city in phases with connections to Summers and also Waterside Drive. Streets include travel lanes, parking lanes, curbs and gutter, boulevards, and sidewalks. Summer Street is projected to receive the majority of the traffic, perhaps even 90% according to the Traffic Impact Study, at least initially, although traffic would disperse from there. Currently, Summer Street does not meet city standards. It has two travel lanes with informal parking on both sides of the street, minimal sidewalk within a 50-foot easement. Approximately 90%, I mentioned, of the traffic would go down Summers. The developer has proposed to provide... To improve Summers by providing more formal parking lanes, new curb and gutter, and sidewalks from the subdivision all the way to Highway 200. That's over 2,000 milli feet. Summers is maintained by Missoula County and will continue to be, so the county would have to approve all improvements to Summer Street. For 06 Engineering, the developer's engineer has been coordinating with Missoula County and the City of Missoula as well on Summer Street improvements. The Clark Fork River, of course, is adjacent to the east, and there are some riverine wetlands along the river. There's a small sliver. The developer has proposed, again, to dedicate that riverfront area to Missoula County to be managed by the Parks and Rec Department. No disturbance of the riparian area is proposed. The developer has submitted a weed management plan and also plans for stormwater control, and conditions of approval recommend maintaining all stormwater on-site, so it would not impact the Clark Fork River. The Missoula County Conservation District has indicated that a 310 permit would be required for the riverfront trail, which is also recommended as a condition of approval. Let's see. We've found out from letters from Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks that the property does provide important wildlife habitat. It provides habitat for a number of different species, birds, mammals, et cetera. And the... Several agencies have requested larger river setbacks to allow travel along the river. This city... Or, sorry, Missoula County would require a minimum development setback from the river of 175 feet, and that's through their zoning, through the county zoning. The city has not required, or has not, sorry, adopted any requirements like that. What the city has required in our regulations is that the developers submit a riparian resource plan, which the application contains, indicating what sorts of uses could occur within and along vegetative buffers along the riverfront area. And in this case, again, the property would be managed by the city, and we feel as though that is a good... Early in the process, there was talk of a homeowners' association managing this park, and some of the comments that we see, for example, from the Conservation District, reflect that. So, there's more concern about individual lot owners kind of making the riverfront area their own, but we feel like... And Nathan McLeod from City Parks and Rec can talk to the potential management of that area, that this would provide a greater degree of protection for the riparian area, as well as good active access for residents and visitors to the riverfront. And again, the parks would be dedicated to the City of Missoula, so it would be open to the public. Under the public health and safety criterion, there really aren't any natural hazards other than potential, you know, the floodplain along the river itself. It's just a narrow strip. There are no unstable soils, high-voltage lines, high-pressure gas lines, anything like that, no steep slopes. The property is within the wildland-urban interface, although it's not heavily treed, and wide, you know, development would occur, urban-level development would occur that would have the impact of reducing wildland fire danger. In such cases, when property is subdivided and within the wildland-urban interface... In such cases, when property is subdivided and within the wildland urban interface, our subdivision regulations require a condition of approval that fire protection guidelines be appended to the covenants, and that is a recommended condition of approval. And then finally, really most importantly, I think fire hydrants would be installed throughout, and there would be two developed ingress and egress points. Eight variance requests are included in the application, and here are the criteria for which variances are properly granted. So the conditions should be based on, should be unique to the property and not applicable generally to other property. They should be based on the physical surroundings, particular shape or topographical conditions. An undue hardship to the owner would result if strict requirements of these, the regulations are not enforced. And you can see the last bullets, granting the variance will not result in threat to public health and safety, or be injurious to other persons or property, not cause an increase in public costs, or violate provisions of the zoning ordinance or growth policy. So starting with variance request number one, the typical right-of-way for a urban, sorry, for a low-density urban local street is 70 feet. That's under our subdivision regulation. So kind of a standard urban residential street would be have a 70-foot right-of-way. In this case, the development team is requesting that that be reduced to 62 feet for the streets that you see here. And as you can see from the cross-section, the road cross-section, the proposed streets have all the functional characteristics of, or physical elements of your typical urban road. So two drive lanes, two parking lanes, curbs and gutters, seven-foot boulevards and side, five-foot sidewalks. Additionally, I failed to mention this at the previous meeting, but along both sides of the streets would also be eight-foot utility easements. So essentially, and those would have dry utilities, so power, phone, things like that. So essentially, the streets would function just like any other within the city, just with a slightly smaller right-of-way. And this is just a, an illustration, it doesn't apply to this, but it's to illustrate why wider right-of-way might be necessary. On steep slopes, where you have large cuts and fills, it's important to have some additional area for right-of-way. You might need to, you know, lay back the slope so they don't erode, and things like that, and so vegetation can be planted. That's not the case here. So staff is recommending that this variance be approved, because in this case, as I illustrated earlier, the property is really quite flat, and this additional area is not needed, as well as the fact that all of the elements, the physical elements of a city street would be provided without the additional right-of-way. So staff recommends conditional, or recommends approval based on conditions that are unique to the property. We feel as though this variance request meets the criteria. Variance request number two is for a short section of Waterside Drive. So this is at the very northern end of the property, and you can see two areas that are circled. So Waterside Drive coming in from the north has a 54-foot right-of-way, and it has parking lane on one side, on the east side, and it has sidewalk on one side. In this case, the developer is proposing to match that, that alignment, in that the right-of-way for this 415-foot segment of Waterside Drive would also have a 400, would also have a 54-foot right-of-way, and parking only on one side of the road, that would be the east side. There's one improvement to the Waterside Drive, and that is there would be sidewalks on both sides of the road here. You can see the illustration where, or portion of the plat that shows sidewalks on both sides. So it would be an improvement in a sense. And the alignment here of this road, as you can imagine, the curve is essentially to reduce traffic speeds traveling into the developed property, the waters edge subdivision to the north. And so the development team's justification for this variance request is they want it to match the existing roadway, which I think makes sense, and also reduce traffic speeds by having a slightly narrower area. So this would have a 54-foot right-of-way and would have parking, a parking lane only on one side of the street. The third variance request is to have a sidewalk on only one side of the street for a short section of road, and this is a 460-foot section. So typically, our urban streets have sidewalk on both sides of the road. This is located along the west edge of the property, and if you can see the topographic lines, you can see that there's a, there's a little steep area along the west edge. And so this is a 460-foot segment of road where there would be a sidewalk only on one side of the street. You can see there's a crosswalk. If you look at the south area, it says end of sidewalk, and there's a street crossing, and then, so people could walk along the east side of the road where there are lots to get to the sidewalk on, along the north. There are no sidewalks along the west. This is proposed to be park area, so it's not like there would be sidewalk missing along the fronts of homes. Really, there aren't a lot of alternatives here because of that topography. The sidewalk would have to be elevated, it would be a fairly funky design if sidewalk were required on both sides of the street. So staff recommends approval based on hardship that's unique to the property, in this case as well. Onto variance request number four, and this is for block length. The city subdivision regulations require that blocks be no more than 480 feet in length. In this case, this, this area is along the southwestern portion of the property. It extends from the southwestern, you know, property boundary up to what would be the western park. And it abuts on the west existing residential development that really doesn't have any connection. There are no streets that this area of land could connect to. There aren't any trail easements or pedestrian easements or anything like that. And so that's certainly a condition that's unique to the property. You know, typically, we like to see greater connectivity, road connections, trail connections, things like that, but it's really just not an option in this area based on the existing development to the west. So again, staff is recommending condition of, recommending approval of this variance based on the existing physical conditions, because not granting, in our, in our estimation, not granting the variance would result in undue hardship in this case. Here is another variance request for block length. And at the south, this is near the south of the property, and you can see that there's a notation for 547 feet. Again, the maximum block length under the City of Missoula subdivision regulations is 480 feet, and they're proposing a wider block. To mitigate that, you can see that there's a black north-south line in that block, that's a 10-foot pedestrian easement that would provide pedestrian connection between those The road Hartwood Place runs north-south, and that's indicated on the slide. At, people traveling north along that, this, this block here would reduce vehicle speeds for vehicles traveling south on this, and would have the impact of, I think, it would, in fact, potentially increase public safety slight, slightly because of the reduced vehicles, vehicle speeds at this block. You know, people would have to come to a stop and then head out one way or the other toward the southern boundary. So staff, again, is recommending condition of, recommending approval of this variance based on existing physical conditions, where we feel that not granting the variance would result in undue hardship. And here's another illustration, this is a close-up. You can see that the 10-foot public access easement and the block in greater detail. Here is another block-length variance. Again, 480 feet is the maximum. This, this area is along the eastern boundary, along the Clark Fork River, or near the Clark Fork River, where this area is 1,815 feet and encompasses, I believe it's roughly 31 lots. And, you know, there really aren't a lot of alternatives here. The rivers to the east, there are no, obviously, there are no street connections or trail connections off to the east. You know, the only, only other alternative would be to put the road really at the top of the riverbank, but I don't think anyone really wants to do that because of, you know, water quality impacts. It also would, would take away a public good in the sense of the park along the riverbank itself. So that is not recommended, but the variance is due to conditions that are unique to the property. You can see those black lines also, 10-foot breaks, pedestrian easements that would link the street to the riverfront trail or the riverbank trail that are proposed as mitigation for this variance request. We only have two more. Here's variance request number seven, and the, the regulations require that each lot must abut upon and have access to a public or private street or road. Under the city subdivision regulations, alleys are not considered a, a road, they're not considered a road type. They might provide the same type of service, vehicular access to lots, but they're not considered a road, so a variance is required. In this case, the lots in question are 62, 65, and 66. They all would have access, vehicular access from alleys. These are lots that are proposed to be developed with multi-dwelling structures, so apartments, townhomes, row houses, and they would have vehicular access from alleys and pedestrian access. You can see right that dark line in the middle is a 20-foot pedestrian access easement. So all of the lots, these three lots would have both vehicular and pedestrian access. The fire department has reviewed the street types that are, the alley types that are proposed here, and has found them to be acceptable and provide adequate public safety. The developer has provided these illustrations for what they're trying to achieve. So where that 20-foot pedestrian access easement is, these are kind of like cottage court-type developments, where the fronts of homes would actually face each other across a green space and a pedestrian path. The rear of the homes, the road structures would be accessed, you know, they'd have driveways in the back. So these would be the fronts kind of looking at each other over green space, and again, vehicular access would be from the rear. So, you know, this is a, a kind of a funky-shaped area, we're at the southern end of the property itself, and staff is recommending approval of this configuration. We've done it in other subdivisions as well. Sapphire is an example where all of the, all of the functional elements, both pedestrian and vehicle access are provided, but there's, there's a funky shape or topographic conditions, whatever it might be. In this case, it's shape, and so staff is recommending conditional, recommending approval of this variance based on conditions that are unique to the property. And then here's the last variance, and it's, again, for block length. And so this is the, again, the multi, multi-dwelling area, where you can see that each of these block faces exceeds 480 feet. And really, the issue here, I think, again, all elements of access would be provided, vehicular and pedestrian. This is a different situation, you know, the developer could have just proposed this whole area as one lot instead of 10. But I think what they're hoping to accomplish is to have breaks between these structures. You can see the easements located between the lots. Access would, again, come from the rear. You know, if it was just one lot, this variance wouldn't be necessary, because, because all, because the lot would have, would abut a street. But in this case, the developer is proposing something different, and staff is recommending of approval. This is a funky-shaped area down at the south, and we think it makes sense based on the variance criteria. So staff is recommending conditional of, conditional approval of the preliminary plat or the subdivision application, subject to 35 conditions that would have to be met either prior to, prior to final plat approval of either the first phase or a subsequent phase, depending on the specifics. But, so final plat, final plating would be made according to a phasing plan. Again, alternate streets, internal streets, alleys, and utilities would be built by the developer and dedicated to the City of Missoula. Summer Street would be upgraded and improved prior to final plat filing of Phase 1, and that would go, again, from the property itself to Highway 200. There's off, a condition recommending off-site water main improvements to maintain fire flows, fire hydrants, parkland dedication, et cetera, and also water rights dedicated to the city. I'll come back to these here in a few minutes. For the board, there are 10 different, 10 different recommended motions for the board having to do with the rezoning, the variance request, and ultimately, the preliminary plat application. But what I really wanted to get to after, whoops, after our last meeting is this. And so, you know, we, we talked a lot about, at the last public hearing, we talked about, about river setbacks, about, about, we talked about agriculture, we talked about traffic, we talked about schools and things like that. And so what I wanted to kind of put out there for board consideration is this. You know, the city is working on an update to its growth policy right now, and there's a community profile section, so it's kind of like a current conditions and trends section. And one of the things that's discussed is housing needs. And so according to this community profile, right now, we're already between two and three housing units behind if we want to have a vacancy rate of between 5 and 8%. And that's considered, considered a healthy vacancy rate. So we're already, we're operating at a deficit in terms of the number of homes in the City of Missoula. The city's population is projected to grow by more than 34,000 residents over the next 20 years. And what that means is that we need about 1,000 homes per year in order to accomplish that, in order to accommodate that population and have what we would consider a healthy vacancy rate. That's a lot of homes, and it won't just happen by, you know, through, through small projects or by someone putting in an accessory dwelling unit here and there and that sort of thing. So it's a real, it's a big challenge that we're facing. So the question is, where should homes be built? And the city has a growth policy that calls for a focused inward approach, where infill, infill development is the priority, is the highest priority. So what, what does infill mean? It means development on existing utilities, near transit, near schools, near stores, medical facilities, recreational facilities, and, and things like that. So where there are facilities and services available, might not, you know, the, the infrastructure might not be perfect, it might be a little substandard today, but can be improved tomorrow, but that's certainly the most, most efficient development pattern. And what I want to mention is, you know, the, the planning board, being a city-county planning board, hears about development also that's out in the county, greenfield-type development. And so this type of infill development, this approach contrasts with farther-out greenfield development, where, where there are fewer neighbors that will be impacted. One of the board members last time, I think it was Josh, said it's nice, because there were two, two kind of subdivision, two big projects that the board considered last go round. One was out at the Y, and nobody showed up to, you know, express discontent. There's a reason for that, it's because nobody lives out there. Okay? And something, you know, in a project like this, it's much harder, because neighbors will be impacted. Infill is difficult, it impacts existing residents, and certainly, there's a need and a responsibility for developers, as well as the local governments, to minimize and mitigate those impacts. Absolutely, I don't mean to minimize that, we have to do that. And also, so there are trade-offs, I guess is what I'm getting at. So infill, it, it can impact wildlife habitat, it impacts, it can impact farmland, but, but it's also, you know, we have to weigh these things. And in the cities, in order to the city's growth policy, that's done in exchange for the compact development pattern that meets lots of the city, lots of the other city goals, providing, or at least seeking to provide affordability, accessibility, addressing climate goals, reducing sprawl, et cetera. So really, that's the thing that I think the board members are charged with, is thinking about these trade-offs, looking at the plans that have been developed, trying to weigh these different things, because there are lots of goods, competing goods here. You know, no one likes sprawl, but we also want to protect habitat, we want to protect prime farmland, et cetera, but it's really hard to do all these things when you need to come up with a, with 1,000 homes per year. So I guess I'll, I'll stop talking now, and, and Sean, or if the board members have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. And again, we have city staff, and I believe county staff here as well, that may be able to assist.
Great, Dave. Thanks for your re-presentation. Is anybody from the developers, or do you guys have any presentation for tonight?
It might be better if you go last, so that there's questions that you can answer those versus go first if that works for you guys. It's a little bit abnormal, but it might be better than come back up and have, write down the questions, see if you can answer those.
Okay. Hold on, I saw. She was asking about his mic.
Brian Throckmorton with 406 Engineering. I, I think it would be better if we went after our public comment. That way, if there are questions, I can hopefully answer some of those and clarify a few different things. If, if you would like me to go now, we definitely can, we want, we have some more input, especially the questions towards the end. But I think it would be better if we can write down public comment. But I think it would be better if we can write down public comment, and then kind of come up and address those, and then if you have questions, I can still be here to answer those.
Okay. So, I think what I can do, and Shane, maybe you can help me with this, is you're welcome to answer questions, but this is your time for like a presentation, like-
Okay, then I'll go, then I, yeah, okay.
Make a spiel.
Okay.
And then, you know, like, so, does that make sense? Is that clear?
Yeah, I just, if, if you had a set, but I just thought it might be a little bit easier to clarify through those presentations, so you don't have to ask them.
I don't know. Shane, you got any feedback on this? And Lynn, I'll get-
I, I think that we should, if there's a presentation, then we should hear the presentation, and then open it up, and again, we'll address questions to either the developer, or Dave, or city staff, based on who we feel like should answer it. So, that would be my input.
Okay. Yeah, that's our typical method. So, let's, let's stick with that. Go ahead and make your presentation. Lynn, go ahead, I see you there.
Sorry, I had a question once. We're ready for questions, so.
Okay. Well, let's let Brian make his spiel, and then I'll address that.
Would it be possible to let me share, actually?
Yeah, just one sec.
So, I think, you know, Dave kind of hit on everything, so I'm going to skip most of what we talked about before. I may hit a few things, and kind of jump more directly to the questions that were at the end of last presentation. So, I think that, that will be a big help to clarify. I think one place to start, because one comment from last time was that we seem like we were a little more at the, the beginning stages of this. So, I kind of wanted to clarify where this project's been so far, just so everybody knows. So, we, we started to look at this project January of 2021. Through that process, we noticed in, in, in that time, that there's actually a one-foot-no-access strip that was a budding Waters Edge subdivision that was on the Phase Three final plat. So, what that meant was, what it, what we thought was a given two points of access, which is needed to get over 35 units, was not a given. We couldn't cross, even though that was a public road, that one-foot-no-access strip said we could not cross it. So, we had, Summer Street was, was, was there, didn't, didn't have an access restriction, but Waterside Drive did have access restrictions. So, we reached out to Tim Worley, I think of my first email was January of 2021. So, three and a half years ago, we started this process to the county. Went through back and forth, wasn't really sure how to address it at that point. I think the spring of that year, we also talked about Robinson Street would extend through Canyon View Park was another possible to get the second, gave a presentation of what we kind of thought, that at that time, we didn't, all the parcels weren't even included in this, but what maybe the subdivision would look like to the community council, to get their feedback and thought process on using the Canyon View Park as a possibility to drive through and have a second entrance. So, that definitely stayed open, there was some back and forth on that. But this process, then, the thoroughness of it really went to the county, basically, I think it was October of that year. We went back and forth, we weren't sure what we were going to do. Finally, Tim decided that a formal request to take the one-foot-no-access strip to the county commissioners, to say that, hey, this, this was put on here, we do need to remove it, what is that going to look like? Went to the county commissioners, had a very thorough process with them. So, when we went to the county commissioners, we started with more of a bubble diagram, weren't sure what we were really going to do to them. So, we started at the max of what the growth policy sets. We looked at what 11 dwelling units an acre were. When you look at this particular lot layout, you can see that, that the orange would be multifamily, the red was residential townhomes, the gray was single-family along the river. See if I can blow this up a little bit more. There we go. Maybe if I do... There we go. So, you know, we, we talked, the county commissioners at that point didn't love what we had. We had come in, they had asked for a traffic impact study to look at what this was going to look like. They asked for more public, public input to meet with the residents. We did that. So, we went out, we did a full traffic impact study, a 55-page study at that time on 11 dwelling units an acre. What does that really look like? We considered, as you can see, we have three entrances. We have Waterside Drive, we have Robinson Street, we have Summer Street. We considered a combination of either all three or just two of each, to, to see what that would look like, presented that, went to the general public. One thing that came out of the first initial meetings was, you know, hey, if you could take, your park is pretty isolated by itself, what about taking that park and moving it over to touch Canyon View Park, and then we create a better community park that each community can then access? We kind of combined the goods that we have for the benefit of everybody that's better off. So, you know, as you look at, we start going down, our, our second run at a lot layout or a bubble diagram includes moving, moving the park over. This process, again, had a lot of pushback, the density was too high, you know, was the top end of the growth policy. So, we went back, looked again, revamped, came with a much smaller area of multifamily in the middle layout. We def, we still had some residential townhomes, and you can see what our proposed dwelling units per acre was up here on them, and then we kind of kept the single-family along the river into the north. So, that was eight and a half dwelling units an acre. This is the layout that the county commissioners signed off on three to zero, that they were okay with before they would allow the one-foot-no-access strip. That whole process, it was brought up, that that was their moment to then comment and have a say over this subdivision, knowing that we were going to go to the city for annexation. So, there was lots of public input. County commissioners voted on this layout. In fact, this layout has a restrictive covenants on the lot of this layout right now. That's filed, filed with the clerk and recorder. Now, we went less than that, but this was the max that we could do. This is the layout that was restrictive. You guys can see also the way the parks are pretty similar. We did add more park than what we show on here, so we increased the park. But, you know, the 50-foot setback from the river, the access to the river, all that, this layout has been bought off by the county commissioners. So, then we, we came over and, you know, our first initial run, need to move my, at the, what we submitted to the city for the pre-application meeting, is this unit right here. So, again, at that time, we came back in, we thought, we were still working on Robinson Street, so we'd come out of the county commissioner meeting, we were still working on Robinson Street, we knew we had Waterside Drive, and we knew we had Summer Street. At that time, we thought it would be helpful to disperse the traffic a little bit more with Robinson Street. Through county parks, that really got pretty shut down. County parks was pretty verbal with me, that they just weren't going to support it, they didn't want to put a street through Canyon View, the residents around there didn't want a street. So, you know, as you look ahead, we did take that exit off, but I will say, the way the layout is, if in future phases, if for some reason we need to add it back in, you can see, we just literally, literally cut it off and cut the corners. So, the layout that you see here could actually still continue if we needed to, if, if county parks changed their mind, any, anything like that. But, in essence, you know, through county parks, the, the strong know, without them, the county commissioners were not going to vote for that extension. So, we, we left off that, but left the design the same way. So, you know, when we went even into the city, we were at seven and a half dwelling units an acre. I think if you look at some of our first stuff, it's like 263 units, and now we're at 252. So, you know, the next layout is really similar to what you see now, but one correction that we've made even since then, is these three lots right here, city parks came to us and said, hey, it would be really nice if you, if you just took those lots and moved those elsewhere, you would increase the park size. It's something we would like to see on a park, it makes the park more open and accessible. And so, we worked with them, then, to take these three lots out to just add additional parkland in the current layout that you see, by moving these other places and trying to work them in. So, there, there has been a lot of input, there's three and a half years into this project. Again, the county commissioners have signed off on this, this middle one. That's the resolution that you see right here, that is signed by them. So, you know, it looks like October of '21 is when we submitted the official request, and even that process wasn't, we got approval from them, voted on June 30th. So, we were back and forth with them, it wasn't just like a one-meeting show-up, everything gets signed off. There was a lot of input and a lot of time put in at that point. You know, here's all the different traffic impact studies. In fact, you know, e, even there's one in between here, but this shows even March of 2022, you know, we went in and did a full traffic impact study. Then we had the third-party traffic engineer come in and do another one for the eight-and-a-half dwelling units. And then, once we've got our final one done now, we have our final in April of '23. So, these are, you know, 55 to 60-page traffic studies that have been updated multiple times, have looked at the, fully what the traffic will be for this area. So, there has been a lot of effort put into that, and a lot of buy-off, even, you know, the, the county commissioners, again, have looked at these studies. They've had third-party reviews. IMAG looked at, you know, through this whole process, the first initial, IMAG went through and had their third, third-party review and through Waters Edge. The, the county traffic engineers have signed off on it, the city traffic engineers have signed off on these traffic impact studies. So, traffic has been thoroughly looked over by multiple agencies, third parties. It's not just a flash in the pan, we just kind of guessed at what we were doing. And again, even that is a third-party professional, that that's what they do for a living. So, you know, that, that's a little history to kind of get you guys to where we're at today. I want to hit on a few other things that we talked about last time, traffic being one of them, but just wanted to give a little background about, we, you know, I've heard, I heard comments that this seems early in the stages, but it's, it's a long ways from it. It's had a lot of government agencies' input, so we're, we're finally to a point now where I think we, we need to, to make a decision and move forward. Showing traffic a little bit, one thing I did want to point out, you know, everybody was wondering what traffic really looked like, where they would go. This gra, this graphic right here shows, basically, from the very northern edge of the development, two Summers, where Summers and Highway 100, 200 connect, is almost exactly the same distance. So, in essence, anywhere within the Spire subdivision, the traffic will go to the south in the Summers. Now, if you're going to Missoula, now, the 10% does go north, so that is where the 90-10 kind of comes from, more or less, is the fact that it is shorter to go to Summer Street than it is to go up on Deer Creek and go around. So, I, I know some traffic will go that way. I know Shane Stacks on here, and, and it would be nice to have him have some comment, maybe one I've done, about the upgrades to Highway 200, you know, talking with him, some kind of controlled intersection, aroundabout stoplight is in, in the process right now being planned for Summers and Highway 200. And I know in our, our traffic study, it talks about the grade being really low for level of service for that intersection, but if you look in there, you know, if a traffic signal or a controlled intersection were developed at Highway 200, then the level of service is going to go up 10A. So, that, that's kind of the idea behind some of this, is, you know, as we go through this process, we know that Highway 200 is going to be upgraded, we're creating a, a big cross, nice cross-section of Summer Street, as wide as we can get it, so that we can get traffic thoroughly to Highway 200. And I will point out, you know, in the, the traffic study, the initial studies only had to accommodate the extra traffic was widening the road by one foot. And our guys, then, with the request of the county public parks to put sidewalks in, have then even gone from there and said, they would do curb gutter sidewalks and paved parking on both sides. So, it's above and beyond what the traffic study would say that is needed to handle that kind of traffic. One other question that was asked towards the end of last week is what would, if you didn't approve the overlay, so basically, you know, this board is looking at the rezones, the rezone is the overlay, what would this development look like? And so, it would, it would go in at RT 5.4. So, I attached a few pictures of some areas in town, they're zoned RT 5.4 with no overlay. You know, and it, basically, it would be similar to this. We would have carbon copy duplex houses. The max density would still be the same. So, we are not at max density right now. Max density is 284 units. I'm guessing if we had to go back and redo it, we would still be at about 250. I can't see us being, you know, that would be about right there. There definitely might be some loss in the additional parkland, acre and a half of additional parkland would probably go away to accommodate more of just the duplex-type houses, but it would be 35 acres of duplex houses is, is what it would look like, but the density would stay the same. The overlay allows to have just a bigger, better variety of housing. So, kind of getting to the heart of the big part of last time, as far as riparian goes. So, I want to talk a little bit about this. First and foremost, our riparian area meets all city subdivision requirements and development requirements. We're not asking for a variance on that. We, we meet the regulations that the city has set forth on that, and that's, that's the jurisdiction we're going into. I did attach where, basically, the denoted, this is in our riparian resource plan that is in subdivision regulation. The red line is the denoted riparian area, the blue would be the trail. So, you can kind of get an idea that the riparian area does not, it's not a big extension of, you know, up the hill and way into the field, and we're going to, we're going to go into the riparian area. It is just directly along the river, and then the Riverside Trail will be out of the riparian area as well, to move forward. So, you know, talking a little bit about the city, one thing that the city does have in their regulations, this is the city's regulations, you know, they say, "A functional definition for a riparian resource area will ensure protection of the resource without unnecessarily impacting developable land." So, you know, you need to remember that. When, when we're looking at this area, 175-foot setback goes into what's currently hayfield, and honestly, currently has a residence out there, and the rental house that's out there is within 175 feet of the river already. So, that, that is developable land. The, the last part, Fish Wildlife and Parks got brought up a lot about, I think Audubon brought, brought it up a couple of different times, but the, these are the comments from Fish Wildlife and Parks that you can see right here. One of their first things says, "The designated riparian setbacks in the proposal are appreciated." So, you know, that, that is something that, I guess I didn't think about bringing up before, but, you know, Fish Wildlife and Parks said that they appreciate what we put in our proposal. They did say that protection of riverfront values would, would be enhanced by a wider buffer. I don't disagree. You know, if we could go to 175 feet or 200 feet, it would be better. I mean, it's the same idea with, if we could put a 10-acre park in, if we could have 70-foot-wide roads with nice bike paths, and then every house costs $300,000, but you can't fit it all. We're, we're in an area where we're trying to have reasonably affordable houses, we're trying to have additional parkland that creates more of a community park, and then also protect the resources and add public access to the river. Some of the other comments that Fish Wildlife and Parks had is, you know, our landscape plan, where we showed planting extra trees and woody vegetation was a benefit to the riparian corridor that we have in our plan. They requested that we put a fence along the riparian buffer, which we put in our proposal as we would put a jackleg fence in. So, that's, that's something easy we can do. And then, one of their, one of their last things was, basically, if the covenants would keep people from clearing the vegetation, with that turning over to the parks, that will be on the city parks to denote, no, you know, no private property will touch a riparian area. So, I know we talked before, but our comments from Fish Wildlife and Parks weren't as brutal as before. In fact, they had a lot of good things to say about the proposal that we had. And then, lastly, we did talk about having, you know, they highlighted for the park side that the trail network would be nice and important for connecting further down to other trail parts. To highlight a little more, to keep going, because I know the riparian area was such a big deal, do you want to highlight, so this is the 175-foot setback, what that would look like, for, this is what the county has. So, you would lose, basically, all the house- So, you would lose basically all the houses along the river. This is the rental house right here. So, you can see that's within the 175-foot setback. And you can see it's hayfield, it's flat hayfield. It is developable, it's not the right, the riparian corridor is right along the river. The other thing to point out is, you know, we had our guys go through with and put 175-foot setback on the reach that is considered that for the county. And the red is every area that doesn't meet what county zoning would currently have for a 175-foot setback. The green is what it is. So, only 30% of the reach, which is, majority of it is the one undeveloped area around the state park, meets actually the setbacks. There's roads, there's houses, there's, so you're not producing this island of, you know, there's not a big giant corridor that all of a sudden you're going to put a bunch of houses in. You're meeting an urban environment, and you're putting an urban environment in an urban environment. It's already that way. So, I did want to point out that this isn't just going to be like a standalone screwing up something that's already pristine. One of the other questions that we had was I-90 noise abatement. Originally, this is one of our original smittles for landscape plan, we did have houses along the interstate. County parks just asked us to take us out. They didn't like the trees that we proposed, but trees will line I-90 for sure. Something else that you're going to have is the multifamily, the back doors or just the garages will face the interstate. So, and the developer has, you know, they want to build this way, but agreed to build more on that side, noise dampening, triple-pane windows, double layers of sheet rocks with soundproofing in between, even vent caps, they said that they've used other places that have sound dampeners. So, in essence, your multifamily in that area will be some of the sound wall, including the vegetation along I-90, to then the front doors are going to come out on, everybody's front door will have the back as the sound barrier to I-90. So, that was some of the thought process on the way these houses were designed, how they were laid out, the alley coming to the back, so that the front then is, you know, pretty soundproof compared to how the back would be on I-90. One of the last things to point out, and I know, you know, Dave kind of has some of this too, but I did want to point out in some research on truly what affordability looks like in brand-new houses. So, that's one thing to remember is, you know, I kind of compared this the other day, that if you want to buy a brand-new vehicle, then, and you want it to be relatively cheap, then you have to buy a car. You can't buy a brand-new cheap pickup. If you want a pickup that's reasonably priced, then you've got to buy it used. So, these are brand-new houses. So, the idea of truly affordable isn't, it kind of isn't new, but not necessarily like everybody would think. To compare it to the medium home price on a brand-new house doesn't make sense. It's just like saying, you know, the average person should go out there and buy a brand-new car when maybe you need to buy a used car. But, but when you build brand-new houses, then people move from used houses to the brand-new houses, and then used houses are now available for people to move into. So, like Dave said, if we have to build 1,000 houses a year, or 1,000 units a year to accomplish that, they have to be brand-new, and then people can move into those, and then hopefully the affordability follows because there's vacancy in our used. So, here is one thing, though, to look at what affordability does on lot size. So, we went through and looked at every, on the MLS system, this is every brand-new house sold in '23 and so far in '24. So, here's the thing, there's only 48 of them. That's not, when you're trying to get to 1,000 and you only have 48 houses sold on MLS last year as brand-new, that's not good. But, when you're under 5,000 square feet in a lot, the average price was $522,000. The average home square footage was 1,500. When you got between 5,000 and 10,000, the price went up to 679. And when you got above 10,000, the price went to 802. So, you can see there's substantial differences in costs when you increase the lot size. So, most of our lots are from 3,000 to 5,000. We do probably have 25%, you know, 5,000 to 6,500. So, you know, the idea would be that most of our houses are in this upper range. That's kind of the goal for the development, with some of them definitely being, you know, in the middle range. So, I just kind of wanted to point out to you, you know, what that looked like as far as density and how density, if we're trying to get at least a little more affordable in new housing, that helps. Also, just looked up, if you guys go to Realtor.com, just do new construction, there's only 55 houses even listed right now for sale, and a lot of those, you know, here's one of them, they're not even constructed yet. So, we are a long ways from trying to meet the goal that Dave stated earlier. So, and then, you know, one thing I do want to say, and I didn't do this last time, recognizing that you guys are a volunteer board, and I know I come in pretty fired up on some of this stuff, but I do super appreciate that you guys show up, there are long days, and you listen to what we do. So, I appreciate that. Also, if you can, you know, if I can come back up and rebut anything towards the end, that would be greatly appreciated. So, if you guys have questions, or there's anything that comes out that's not exactly the way, you know, the facts aren't what they probably should be, maybe I could come back up and restate them. So, if there's a chance to talk at the end and rebut some questions or answer some, I would appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, there will be an opportunity to address questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that everything, Brian? You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your time. Lynn, I'm going to get to you just one second. So, board members, just in thinking about time a little bit, we're going to let Lynn ask her question here, but if we don't have anything pressing to get answered right now, I'm leaning towards moving into public comment, because that's going to be a, we got quite a few folks in-house. So, just while Lynn's asking her question, think about it. All right, Lynn, go for it.
Okay, sorry, but I do have several questions, but the question that comes up for me mostly right now is to 406 Engineering, and it sounds like they were ready to go with the county, so why didn't they pursue that? Because it seems like they would maybe already be under construction now. So, that's my question.
Okay, go ahead, Brian. Yeah, you're welcome to answer that. Is your mic on?
I think I shut it off in excellent. So, thanks, Lynn. So, a lot of that has to do with tying to city infrastructure. It might almost be best if, Dave, do you think Troy could answer the why it's important when you're tying to city water and sewer, and you're in annexation A, why you're annexed to the city, and what that really means to development? It might be better, Lynn, if you hear it from them, and then I can also, you know, say it for us, but that might be helpful.
What do you think, Dave?
Troy, are you available to answer that question?
Trying to see. Can't tell if Troy's still here.
Hi, Dave, I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
So, Troy, I was hoping you could explain, Lynn had asked why the need to go to the city versus the county. I was hoping you could explain, you know, the ability tying to city sewer and water, being in zone A for annexation. You know, you and I had had this conversation before about why it's important to annex to the city when you're using city facilities like that.
Yeah, so basically, it's what the city requires for using city services, right? So, the idea is that the city will eventually have annexation in most parts of the area that we have water and sewer. Those are the first items that leave out, and then that's followed by other infrastructure, trail connections, that kind of stuff. Our fire response then usually follows those same developments. And one of the big things is that when you do annex into the city, you get the increase in density. It's an increase, it's a different way for emergency responses. Missoula Fire has an urban density response type, where Missoula Rural has a rural response type, and that deals with normally how they have hydrants, they have water tenders instead of. And so, basically, urban density should follow the city in both infrastructure and in responses. So, therefore, the city does ask, and it is a priority, that if we do provide water and sewer services to new developments, and they are within the area of our emergency response, they will be annexed into the city.
Lynn, one other thing to point out on this, when we originally submitted, the new zoning had taken place, so that was one dwelling unit per acre out there. So, you have to remember, we've been at this three-and-a-half years, the new zoning's one-year-old. We, in fact, we submitted our application in May of last year. So, when we started this whole process of back and forth with the city, it was one dwelling unit per acre. So, there's a lot of, we started down that road, it's the road that's the right for, you know, annexation A, tying to city sewer and water. There's also a lot more to it with, you know, our road and sewer design, our road design would have to get double approval. But, one of the big things, and we had to correct this even, you know, lately in sufficiency, our initial applications, if you look through the initial ones, had, you know, CC, I think it was CCR3, but basically, one, it was one, or CCR1, one dwelling unit per acre was what was zoned out there. So, you know, obviously, that wasn't going to work, so we started originally down the path strictly because of that. But then, you know, more I've learned about it, it's a better path for us to go down anyhow.
Could I add to that a little bit, or just address it from a slightly different angle, Lynn?
Please.
And that is, so, over the years, lots of development projects have been developed in the county, and then ultimately brought into the city. And so, the city and the county have had different design standards, so different standards for streets, sidewalks, sewer and water, you know, curbs, gutters, street trees, those types of things, that when they come into the city are very difficult to retrofit, very expensive to retrofit. And then, at that point, you're dealing with a lot of different landowners. So, it kind of doesn't happen. And one of the responsibilities that a city has when property is annexed, and this is under Montana annexation law, is the city is required to provide an equivalent level of service to all areas within the city. So, we really can't have some areas that are substandard, or we certainly don't want to have and shouldn't have some areas that are substandard, and that we're trying to kind of bring up to speed over time, because there just isn't, there aren't pots of money to retrofit development. So, that's from the city's perspective, it helps if we can annex and set the development upright to begin with. It's proven helpful over time.
Great, thank you, Dave. Hopefully, that addresses it.
This, I do have another question, if you don't mind. One of the comments is that the development will have a lasting positive impact, and I'm concerned about that for the neighbor, the current neighborhood. And I wonder if that was addressed and how, if we feel like that is true. I guess that would go to Dave.
Thank you, Lynn. You know, I mean, I think, as I was talking about with the trade-off slide, you know, there are, I mean, it's hard to avoid. When you're doing infill development, when you're developing near where there's already residences, there are impacts, there's change that occurs, you know? And so, it's our responsibility to require the developer to come up with a plan, for example. So, let's use Summers Street as an example. If the developer is required to upgrade Summers Street from the property to Highway 200, there will be people that will be impacted, people who use that road, people who live along that road. So, the developer and the county come up with a plan to make sure that property owners can still access their properties, they have reasonable access while this construction is going on, for example. And the developer, because of some of these impacts, the reason that Summers Street would be required to be upgraded is because there would be impacts to that road, and it's currently substandard. And so, the developer, you know, so, right now, as I mentioned earlier, there are basically two travel lanes, you know, two paved travel lanes, it's like more of a rural paved section of road than an urban one. And so, I know it might not feel like it to the residents, but they would get new paved parking lanes, they would get new sidewalks, they would get new stormwater. So, it would be, there would be some improvement, there would be kind of a, I guess, a give and take. And I know that looking at it right at the outset, you're looking at, you know, a substantial increase, maybe 2,000 vehicle trips per day along that road. And it seems like a big impact, but, you know, what we require at the city and what the county would require as well, I think, is that the developer kind of meet the residents halfway, make sure they can access their properties, make sure that there's good communication, and make sure that there's some public benefit out of it as well.
I'm sorry, who, can you tell me who you are? I'm...
Dustin Baker. Just as far as the impact, I'd like to clarify where that impact was taking from.
Okay, hold on a second, sir. You're going to have to hold your question for like a specific moment that I can bring you up. I haven't opened it up to public comment, so I can't have you like...
Okay, sorry, I was just, I wanted a question on that 2,000 cars of where that was considered at.
Okay, yeah. Okay, does that feel like that addresses your question there, Lynn?
Kind of, yes.
Okay. And is that, do you have any more?
I just have one more question, sorry, but that's a lot. The path along the river, they said that would hit recommending a Jack Lake fence. Do you think that's appropriate to keep people from making, I can't remember what, someone called them rabbit trails or little paths down to the river? I mean, is the plan to not have access to the river, and if so, then should a better fence be planned?
Who wants to field that one? Dave, go ahead.
Grant Ray with Development Services. I'd like to defer that question to Nathan MacLeod of City Parks and Rec. I think he may have a better kind of sense, it would be his office that's managing that park. And so, Nathan, are you available?
Yeah, I can answer that. So, a Jack Lake fence, if you're familiar with the design of it, it's kind of like an A-frame. It's fairly difficult to cross, and so, the idea is that, and this was recommended from Fish Wildlife and Parks, was that that Jack Lake fence will help to restrict movements of people down to the river, so that we don't get significant erosion like we see in areas of downtown Missoula, where people have caused, you know, social trails down to the river that have caused a lot of erosion, so trying to protect the resource.
Okay, so, you think it's adequate?
Yeah, I think it's adequate. I think it's inevitable that people will go to the river. If I had a house right there, I would. And so, I think through management, and the city is equipped, and we have experience managing riparian areas, and so, we know how to deal with this kind of situation where people create pathways down to the river. We know how to revegetate, and we have the resources to protect the riparian areas. Whereas, if this was private, a lot of times what we found is that private citizens or HOAs don't really know how to take care of that kind of an environment of a riparian area. And so, I do think that it's better suited to be in public hands and under the management of City Parks and Rec.
Thank you.
Okay, and unless anybody from the board has any further clarifications that needed, we're going to go ahead and move to public comments. Dave Loomis, if you need to make a public comment, you just holler, or not a public, excuse me, if you need to make a comment, Dave, just holler out, because I can't see Okay, great. Okay, so, we will now open it up to public comment. I apologize to you, sir, earlier when you wanted to make a comment, I just was trying to clarify if you were with the developers or something, and I could bring you up. But, now will be your time here in just a second. So, we're going to open it up to public comment for folks here in-house and online. So, when you come up to the podium, please state your name for the record. Try and keep in mind that you have a three-minute time limit, and I will do my very best to allow you to say your piece, but also let you know that you've hit your three minutes. I also like to let people know... I also like to let people know that when you get in for the city council, they're much stricter than I am, and I might be a little stricter tonight, because this is our second run, and we got another, we have another hearing after this. So, with that, come on up. If anybody's joining us out there and online, you can call into the number on the screen, which is 406-272-4824, conference ID is 127489322, pound sign. All right, please, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Sue Holden, East Missoula Community Council. I'm gonna be reading a statement from Lee Bridges, one of our residents in East Missoula, but I would also like to quickly add that there's four new apartment complexes going up out in East Missoula, and not a single one of them had to request annexation to get water and sewer. So that's just a flat-out misleading statement to indicate otherwise. And I would like to add that you kept bringing up that they would have to face a hardship. With everything that's going on, the residents of East Missoula are gonna be facing 10 years of hardship if this goes through. But I'm gonna get on with Lee's statement, if I may. As Dave Decranby pointed out in the last meeting, quote, "The city of Missoula has adopted an annexation policy which provides specific guidelines for annexation of properties so that the annexation is not done in a willy-nilly or haphazard type or arbitrary manner," unquote. Aside from city utilities that are already available, Dave references another key component to annexation to the city, quote, "is when properties are annexed into the city, there have to be services and facilities like infrastructure up to city standards on the property being annexed," unquote. In this case, 35 conditions need to be met, including streets, sewer, water, parks, fire hydrants, other elements to be brought up to city standards." And this is to be brought up to city standards. As Dave indicated, there have been properties that have been annexed into the city, but not with standards for streets, sidewalks, et cetera, that are up to city standards, and points out that retrofitting is quite expensive, so annexation prior to development is a way to avoid that. My comment is going to focus specifically on streets. Summer Street is county, not city, and is being represented as the main traffic use area for this new subdivision that is trying to rezone for higher density, for example, higher traffic and safety concerns on our already well-used county infrastructure. Based on Wikipedia, East Missoula covers 1.2 square miles of land area with 790 households on almost 733 of those 768 acres. The developer is planning on having at least 252 households on the remaining 35 acres currently undeveloped, adding nearly a third more population to our community on only a very small fraction of our land area. Do you understand the toll that it would take on our well-worn infrastructure here? How does that comply with the city's annexation policy? The burden you leave us with here is very unreasonable and very unfair. Lee goes on to say, regardless of the layout the developers present for initially refurbishing Summer Street at the onset, it's still not up to city standard of 60 feet. It is substandard street of only 50 feet. By the way, who's responsible for redoing Summer Street 10 years from now, after all those years of heavy construction equipment being moved daily up and down Summer Street, let alone all of the other streets in East Missoula? Concrete trucks, heavy equipment being towed in, et cetera. Granting a zoning variance for higher density for a city annexation that hasn't even been granted yet is only in compounding the problem East Missoula already has with its narrow streets. You're essentially endangering the lives in our community by overburdening our road system in East Missoula for the need this developer has to make more money with total disregard to our community's welfare and safety. All the developer has to do is show you the bright shiny object at the beginning, and impress you at how nice it will look when first built, and then walk away when they pocketed the profits and left our community with the overtaxed infrastructure and costs to maintain it after it's built within our community. It's mentioned that as county residents, we'd still have a voice at the table throughout the process, when and if the property is annexed. Well, I guess we'll see if we do or do not at the next city council meeting, since we have no representation at the city council table, and we're not the ones feeding the city coffers. We're not trying to stop the property from being developed, we're trying to stop the property from being annexed into the city, and the rezoning from creating a higher density on all the neglected roadways we already have here in East Missoula, which only addresses one of our concerns. Traffic from the subdivision is not going to robotically follow the developer's traffic study, and drivers will divert to all the roads we have now in order to avoid the overwhelming traffic just on Summer Street that this subdivision will create. And I might add once again that the traffic study was from 2021, and the one in 2023 was just a copy of the study from 2021. So if there's been a new traffic study since then, in these last three and a half years, we've yet to see one. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, sir, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Robert Yeomans. I live at 1074 Waterside Drive. My question is a math problem. If you have a 450-foot block on an 18, you know, requirement, block requirement in the city, and you have an 1,800-foot area that does not have a block, it's all one block, why wouldn't you have four walkthroughs, 10-foot walkthroughs, for the people in the subdivision to be able to get to this trail that's gonna be along the river? You only have three on there, and it seems to me that mathematically, you should have four. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Come on up, sir, please state your name for the record.
My name is Bruce Baxter. I have one typed page of comments I would like the board to consider. My wife, Janice, and I are adjacent homeowners to the Aspire subdivision. At the July board meeting, Grass Valley Gardens subdivision drew six positive comments and seven negative comments. To date, Aspire de Nova has drawn 91 negative comments and one positive comment, with conditions, that's 55 signed protest petitions, 24 negative engaged comments, five negative Zoom comments, and seven negative in-person comments. Over 98% public opposition to the project. There's a reason for this. Aside from the park, through this entire process, 406 Engineering and de Nova have not offered one word or concession to the concerns of the people of East Missoula. The developers are not listening to us. I understand that the issue before the door of the board is whether to recommend the rezoning to R54R overlay or not. The overlay zoning would allow three easements, reduced building setbacks, more parking fronted structures, and multi-dwelling structures. For several decades, the adjoining neighborhood was on CRR3 residential, which allowed maximum four houses per acre. Missoula County just went through a year-long, years-long study and rezoned the eastern half of East Missoula to maximum six per acre in July 2022. This rezoning already does not match the character of the neighborhood. Now, de Nova wants to suddenly rezone to allow 7.2 units per acre. Summer Street currently flows 200, or, I'm sorry, 800 vehicles per day. De Nova is planning 2,900 vehicles per day on Summer Street, even after revamping or upgrading Summer Street, which does nothing to improve traffic flow. Summer's own, de Nova's own traffic study says issues at the Summer Street to Highway 200 intersection will remain above the desired condition. Issues is just a sugar-coated word for traffic problems. Summer Street does not have the reserve capacity to flow 2,900 vehicles per day. And this isn't just not in my backyard. De Nova is planning traffic jams for all of East Missoula's residents, businesses, de Nova's own customers, the 13 new multi-story housing complexes along Highway 200, East Missoula and Bonner I-90 intersections. And this crush of traffic will also create a flood of traffic onto Van Buren Street intersection and the Orange Street underpass. De Nova's current housing map is planning 252 housing units. The easements are designed only to allow more density. The only way to reduce the crush of traffic is to reduce the density. We are asking the density to be held to the maximum Missoula County's current six units per acre. Instead of 252 units, de Nova could still build 210 units on the 35 acres. This would somewhat reduce the crush of traffic from 2,900 to 2,400 vehicles per day. As Dave Decranby said, we would like the developer to meet us halfway. Another density problem is de Nova's plan for 35-foot high multi-story dwellings. Montana Avenue, Canyon View Drive, all the other adjacent streets have view lots. We can see the Clark Fork River, the canyon, the corridor, the golf course, the railroad, and the Hellgate Canyon. If Canyon View, well, Canyon View Drive is called Canyon View for a reason. If de Nova is allowed to build two-story structures, only de Nova's highest-paying customers will have views, blocking our views, reducing our property values and resale values. If de Nova's current housing maps gets rubber stamped, we will have to change the name of the area from Hellgate Canyon to Apartment View Canyon. I also read, Missoula County's environmental design standards require a minimum buffer open space, 125 feet from the average high-water mark of the river to any structure. A letter from Tim Worley, senior planner, states, "We recommend a wider riparian protection area." I measured the open space behind the adjacent Waters Edge neighborhood. All houses except one, Deer Creek Road, had a minimum of 50 feet from the back of the actual house to the top of the riverbank, and no fences. We asked that de Nova at least match this 50-feet open space. For several, these several reasons, we asked the board to vote no on recommending the change of zoning, and ask that any development in the area be limited to 20-foot single-story heights, as Flathead County has done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna move to somebody online here. We're just gonna, sorry, sir, we're gonna give this person online a chance, we haven't done anybody online. Stephanie, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, so, I made a comment last time, I've made comments before. I just feel like the city and Brian Throckmorton, they were allowed to reread the whole of their presentations, and yet, all of our public comments are just, you know, they were last, that was old news. I would have liked for them to have been recapped at least a little bit, so we would know that what we said last time still applies. Like Bruce said, we have a lot of things to say about this development. Not all developments generate this amount of comment. Our feelings are real. But both Dave and Brian in their presentations used their platforms to, I feel like Dave was lecturing you guys, he's your planning supervisor, and he basically told you that ignore what these people are saying, we need this housing. And Brian Throckmorton came right out and threatened us with, if we don't get this, we're gonna get us, you're gonna get a smaller park and cheaper houses, but they're gonna cost more. I just, and we're down four people in your group, now we've only got five people, so it just feels like it's no wonder that we feel like we're not being heard. And that's the takeaway that I got from this meeting, and it didn't make me feel very good about the way this has gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, appreciate you taking the time to make your comments. Okay, I'm gonna go to the gentleman that was gonna speak a second ago, and then we'll go back online to Jim Brown. So Jim Brown, you're in the batter's box.
My name's Jeremy Williams, I'm in support of the Aspire development, and I've been a 20-year real estate, or real estate broker, but I have no relationship to the developer, I'm here as a concerned citizen. Reason I'm concerned is because Missoula's in a difficult spot right now. We've had almost a 10-year run of really low inventory, and we got a problem with supply and demand. Because inventory is so low, our housing prices are skyrocketing, making it very difficult for Missoulians to afford houses. We're seeing outside influences coming in, starting to control our community, and change the fabric of our neighborhoods. To put this in perspective, right now, there's about 80,000 people that live in Missoula. Probably, if you look at the surrounding areas, I bet it's closer to 100,000 people. There's currently, as of today, there's 374 houses for sale for all those people, you know, for places to live. If you break that down, under 700,000, there's about 160 houses for sale for 80,000 people. We're at a breaking point. If we don't find positive ways to create inventory in our market, we're not gonna recognize Missoula. We don't want Missoula to turn into a Boulder, Colorado, or a Boise, Idaho. The reality is, Missoula's gonna change, and we have the opportunity to have positive change and be a part of it to keep the fabric of our community, or it's gonna be forced upon us. You know, I understand change is hard. Most of us live in houses that were created by subdivision. At one point, I imagine there was a time where our forefathers were having these very same conversations, yet these are neighborhoods that we're proud of and wanna be belonging I guess, I wanna see Missoula stay the way it is, and because I want Missoula, people of Missoula to be able to stay here, we don't wanna lose our workforce, our aging population, and our students at the university, because they can't afford to live here. So for those reasons, I support the development. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna move back to the online, and we have Jim Brown. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, I'm Jim Brown, with Five Alley's Audubon. I've been concerned with the discussion and analysis of the riparian setback, because it seems to be an either-or. It's either 50 feet, or it's 175 feet, and there is something in between that, that could be immensely beneficial. So when Audubon reviews subdivision proposals, we refer back to some 80-some studies on disturbance of birds, and what it tells us is that you need, in this case, along the riparian zone of the Clark Fork, you'd need 100 feet of riparian zone setback, and 20 more feet of no build. That would allow the breeding birds that can be found around there to have enough security to go ahead and maintain their life, their breed, and reproduce in that zone. So something like 100 to 120 feet would be immensely beneficial, and less than. So one other thing that seems to be missing here is that when the developer began work on this, I don't see an effort to meet with Fish Wildlife and Parks or Audubon, and walk the site and talk about what would be a reasonable setback for riparian zone in this area, and how could we lay it out on the ground? If that were done, I think it would have solved a lot of these problems, but it hasn't. And I think it would be a huge mistake to just allow the 50-feet zone to go forever, because once that subdivision's in place, it's there forever, and it's important that, although we need lots of houses, it's very important to keep these precious riparian habitat and zones protected for the future generations that are gonna live here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you taking the time to be here this evening. Okay, do we have anybody else in-house that would like, go ahead, sir, come on up?
Hi, Dustin Baker. I live on 601 Montana Avenue. I guess to follow up with the Audubon question, you know, in a review of the slide of the setbacks that was presented earlier, it seemed like they incorporated a lot of the golf course into that 175 setback as a no-zone. And even though that the golf course may be in part of that 170, or that 30%, it's still an undeveloped area compared... still an undeveloped area compared to having homes and roads and sidewalks and stuff there. So I guess that, I felt like that slide was slightly misleading on a 30% because again, it was golf course and other uses there. My question again, while we were talking about traffic study, we often hear this number of 2,000 cars per day being impacted. And I feel like that's really misleading when we talk about it that way. That's 2,000 cars to Highway 200. That's not 2,000 cars to the first or second intersections coming from that subdivision. My corner is Montana and Summers. I see, you know, 20 or 30 cars a day, not 2,000 cars a day. I feel like these numbers are getting diluted as we talk about them entering Highway 200 and not the first and second intersections that those, that traffic intersects. The traffic will then disperse and go throughout our community. So talking about it just directing to one intersection seems like it's a little bit hiding the facts there. Again, you know, talking about the communities and this request to restate how dense that community is, we are already starting to have cherry-stem communities of the city. We have this, the golf course that's on its own cherry-stem out in its spot. We're going to have Aspire that's its own cherry-stem to another spot. We're having a development of a lot of different communities in with one geographic area. We're going to have four distinct, odd communities that all have their own different zoning and setbacks and parks and safety measures that aren't to the rest of the community. So right now, we have Rivers Edge, we have the golf course community, we're talking about adding Aspire as another individual community, and then we have the rest of East Missoula that was developed. And I just, it feels like we're going down the wrong path there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time to be in here. I'm missing Peter. Last time, Peter was flipping these for me and helping me keep track. All right, does anybody else want to come up and make public comment? Oh, I see somebody online. Okay, we're gonna, Eric Berry, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
Hey, thank you. This is Eric Berry. I live on the southern end of Summer Street, in one of the side streets there. I was just curious if the, any traffic study, and I apologize if I may miss, if the traffic study included any of those 10 years' worth of construction traffic related to both the developer, any subcontractors, if that was included or factored in? So that's kind of part one. And then, part two, I was curious, and maybe this is more of a contract question, I was just curious if, you know, let's say we get five, seven years into this construction phase and Summers experiences weren't here much higher than expected from all this construction traffic. I'm curious then, what's the mechanism or who pays for any short-term paving improvements that would be needed on Summers in order to maintain a safe street? Through that, through that 10-year period, it sounds like after, after the developer has passed off the street to the county, I'm just curious, what happens if seven years down the road, five years down the road, we have a whole lot of heavy construction damage on Summers? Kind of what happens then? And then two, how do residents of East Missoula and the county handle that when the damage is coming from heavy equipment related to a city development? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Okay, anybody else here in-house? All right, not seeing anybody. We'll just wait a second here and see if we have any last-minute folks, or if anybody that needs to build a little courage. Oh, see, there we go. All right, we're going to stick with online folks. William Junkermeyer, hopefully I'm pronouncing that right. Go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name for the record. And you have three minutes, please.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, Bill Junkermeyer, recently to East Missoula. But been listening to this, the various discussion points, and it comes down to the riparian buffer. Everybody here feels that it's pretty inadequate as it's currently laid out. The traffic, the point to remember is that this traffic study talks about Summer Street, doesn't talk about all of East Missoula. And the traffic study, when it was presented to the county, was flawed in the first place because it left off major developments that have occurred since, such as the 180 additional units being built at Deer Creek, the multiple apartment buildings that have occurred over the last few years, they were not included in that study. And it hasn't been updated other than the cover page. The south end, as far as the noise, planting some trees isn't going to do much for noise mitigation for the area. What about, was ever the Van Buren Street-type sound wall ever considered for this development? And then, you know, as far as the housing needs, we all agree that there needs to be additional housing in Missoula, but it needs to be done in a responsible manner. You know, we don't, you know, in considering housing and new developments, let's not sacrifice the quality of Missoula or East Missoula in order to shove in, cram in a bunch more houses. You know, we need to, we need to do our best job in considering these developments and not sacrifice our citizens, their current living standards, and the future of Missoula. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and just take a minute here. Like to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to speak. Coming up, all right, come on up. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Gretchen Murray, and I live right on the back of where this development will happen. So as it starts to get built, we will, on Canyon View Drive, experience 10 years of construction as it phases through. So we talk about the need for our affordable housing, but it doesn't look like this is going to be affordable housing. And we're looking at unsettling everything else that's going on. I spoke last time about the traffic issues. So we want to, once again, I want to reiterate the quality of life for existing residents and the new residents. So I thank you for considering that as we go forward.
All right, we'll hang tough here for a minute, see if anybody joins us online. Okay, I am not seeing anybody in-house here. Am I missing anybody online? Okay. All right, well, I think we're going to go ahead and close public comment for this hearing, which brings us, board members, to our discussion and motion. So I think, oh, Dave, go ahead.
Are we ready for discussion before a vote?
Yes.
I believe discussion among the planning board is important to form, to be informed on the voting. That's my position.
Yes, absolutely. As soon as we get a motion, we can have all the discussion that we feel like we need, for sure. And we will also try and address as many questions as we possibly can. I've been taking notes, other board members have been taking notes, Dave's been taking notes, so we will try and address all the questions brought forward by the public. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead. So first, my apologies. I was understood that I was not on the planning board anymore today, but I really am. So thank you, Annalicia, for calling me up. I'm joined on this. I think there's a critical balance to me missing here, and that's the riparian setback from the river. I pointed, is a nice way to say, the response from the applicants in the city to the issue that was brought up. Again, there's other issues, and the local folks have pointed them out, especially if they're treating the summer over the tenure. But to me, the most important thing, there was not adequate response. And therefore, I don't see how this planning board can approve this particular subdivision. You know, the density in general doesn't bother me, but what we have here, we have 35-foot-tall houses looking right down on the river in a very, very short distance from the river itself. That's, that's what some cities do. I don't believe the city of Montana should. And that's, is that the way you're going to treat the Clark Fork River and actually the rest? The golf course analogy is totally false. The golf course and pathways that are close or not close to the river, there's no lights and night use and use of the property, but I held this. So I don't see how that analogy. So anyway, after 100 hours of explanations and sales pitch from the city and the developer, I don't see how I can develop a plan for this project. I just want to put it out there. There's comments, thank you.
Great, thank you, Dave. Okay, Shane, what do you got?
Let me just ask you a couple of questions. This is to Dave DeGrandprey. So in your presentation, there was a note about a dry utility easement outside. So one of the variances is dealing with 62-foot right-of-way. And you mentioned that there would be an eight-foot dry utility easement. Is that outside of the 62-foot right-of-way? Or is that within the 62-foot right-of-way? So the basis of the question is, is am I thinking about this as a 78-foot no-build zone? Or am I thinking about this as a 62-foot right-of-way with dry utilities?
The dry utilities would be located within an easement that's outside of the right-of-way. So outside of, farther back onto the lots from the sidewalks, for example. So it's more like 78 feet than 62.
Thank you. Maybe just to roll through a couple of questions from folks in the public, or at least as far as I'm interpreting them.
Hey, Shane?
Yeah.
I feel like we should get a motion on the floor so we can have a little broader discussion here.
That's fine if you want to do that. I was going to ask some clarifying questions before that, and then we can discuss. But whatever, Sean, you're in charge of the meeting, and you do what you want to do.
No, you keep going. I've allowed it.
All right. I think the question of maintenance of Summer Street is a pretty good one. So Summer Street is, in general, on county property. And so therefore, obviously, the developer is going to develop, I think we heard, 2,000 feet of that to bring it up to a higher standard with sidewalks and curbs and gutters and all that good stuff. Or maybe not sidewalks, but at least a parking lane and two lanes of traffic, curb and gutter. Seemingly, the burden of maintaining that street is still on the county, however, which is not going to receive a single dime of taxpayer money once this area is annexed. Would that be a reasonable statement? Maybe, Dave?
I think it's a reasonable statement for a period of time. You know, I don't know what the future holds. There's currently a delayed annexation agreement until at least 2034. The area, all of East Missoula is in Annexation Area A, but, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you whether it's going to all be annexed into the city of Missoula or not, or what, you know, what kind of circumstances might be required for that to happen. So I guess for at least the time being, that's a fair statement, Shane.
All right, I appreciate that.
Hold on a second.
Let me just add one thing, and this goes into, I think, what you're getting at, but also, one of the questioners talked about, okay, so developers on the hook to upgrade, upgrade Summers in year one, or, you know, phase one. But then there's construction traffic, there's other, you know, residents using it, it'll deteriorate over time. How is that handled? There are mechanisms to do that. There's, in fact, one of the conditions of approval is for the future residents of this subdivision to waive their right to protest the formation of an improvement district. And it would be for Summers, for Waterside Drive, for several, for all the internal subdivision streets, et cetera. So there's a mechanism that's built in. It's an imperfect one, because some of the costs also fall on the existing residents and also existing users of Summer Street. But anyway, that's how we've tried to address it. And I think Shane Stack may still be here. He's the City or County Public Works Director. He might have something to say about that as well.
Yeah, Dave, that's exactly what I was going to say, too, is if we can get that waiving the right to protest a special district, that goes a long ways. And I think you would also want to start collecting on that special district, because they, what we've experienced in the county, as soon as those subdivisions are 20 years or older, that right to protest all of a sudden comes back. So as long as we start collecting those funds from day one, and it doesn't have to be a lot, or you could just do, you know, $10 a year, something like that, for each property, at least you would have, you would start building up the savings to do something on Summers or Waterside, depending on which road you're looking at. But ultimately, you know, right now, they would be county roads and would be the county's responsibility. And that's no different than any of these other county roads and city streets that interface. We do a really good job of partnering with our city cohorts, and, you know, we do meet fairly regularly and talk about where we can work together and maximize our efforts. And part of that means, you know, sometimes the city's plowing county roads, and sometimes the county's plowing city roads. And I would imagine we'll probably end up with something similar in this area, too. Hopefully, that is beneficial to the conversation.
And I appreciate that, Shane. And you might be the right person to answer the next question, if I may. We talked about the Highway 200 improvements a little bit here. Is there, is there a plan at the intersection of Summer and 200 that is in the works here? Is this going to trigger something?
Yeah, I don't, what I would say, Shane, is that we certainly recognize the development and the high volume that is potentially at this intersection. We are right now just trying to get a grant agreement done. And I think once we get a grant agreement, we can start working on design and really focusing hard on the bigger details, like Summers and Highway 200. I will tell you that in the conversations we've already had, we all recognize that, you know, this intersection is going to be a high priority for improvements. What that looks like, I can't tell you right now. I know Brian mentioned, like, potentially a signal. You know, if it's going to be signalized, it has to meet warrants. And I, Brian, I can't remember if And I, Brian, I can't remember if the, if the traffic study showed that that intersection meant warrants or not, but that's going to be a criteria. And if it doesn't meet signal warrants, then you can look at Roundabout. The challenge with Roundabout is, you know, they're very expensive. You're probably in the neighborhood of two, three, maybe four million, just depending on how big and complex it is, so. And we don't have an unlimited budget. We've got a $30 million budget, which seems like a lot. I think 19 million of that is focused for the railroad underpass. So I think the good news there is, is that DNSF is committed to developing the and delivering the railroad underpass. And I think they can do that a little more efficiently than we could at the local level. And so hopefully, there's some cost savings there. But yeah, I wish I had a really good crystal ball that could foresee what everything's going to look like. But I think in four years, we'll know what it's going to look like.
Thanks, Shane. Sean, I noticed that Troy has his hand up. And what do you want to? Do you like me to call on Troy?
Who's Troy with? I forget.
City Public Works.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Troy.
Thank you. Yeah, Troy Monroe, City Engineer. I just was wondering if Shane may be able, Shane Stack is able to speak on just the comment that $0 are going to the county for this road. I believe that August 1st, county impact fees went into effect even for city building permits. And Shane, I just was wondering if any of that $200 that goes to general, if any of that goes to Public Works and Streets?
Troy, good question. No, we don't receive, with the impact fees, we don't receive any funding. Mainly because when you look at how impact fees work, is you've got to use it for added capacity. And one of the challenges we face is, a lot of our streets, we don't have a capacity issue, we just have a condition issue. And so, you know, where we landed was that, you know, it didn't make a lot of sense for us to try to collect impact fees, because we didn't have capacity issues, so.
Thanks, Troy and Shane. I think the last thing that I wanted to say, it's not a question, but it's a statement, and it's to Stephanie, who made the comment about, you know, this is drawn out over two planning board meetings now. Your comments have been heard, and there is a public record and meeting notes from the previous meeting on July 16th. I have read those. We voted those into the record last planning board. So although this might seem disjointed and, at some level, spanning over two meetings, I do believe that you've been heard and appreciate your time attending both. And I just want to thank you for being here. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Shane. And any other questions from board members? I apologize for the little bit of, we're a little off our normal trajectory. Typically, board members get to ask questions, but I kind of pushed them out of the way so we could get to public comment. So that's kind of where we're landing here, if everybody, if anybody needs a little clarification. Right. Rick, I can't, you guys see anything from Rick? Has he got a hand up? Okay, all right. Are you guys ready to? I'm going to, I'm going to hold my comments and questions until we get a motion on the floor. You guys feel like you're ready to get a motion out there? Start chewing this up some more? And I think we
I'll throw it out there so we can talk a little more about it.
Great. Dave, could you bring up your list of motions? And I'm pretty sure we can just do these in chronological order. Maybe we'll lump some of the
I guess the first one was the zoning, correct?
Yeah, the first one is the rezone, so that'll be the first crucial hurdle.
I'm having trouble getting it up right now, just technical difficulties, but I'm working on it.
All right, no worries. Technical difficulties, standby to standby.
I got about 27 cabs open, so I don't know if I have it. Oh, I do have it.
All right, I think we're making progress on both ends here.
Yeah, I have the recommended motion on my screen. Here we go. Okay.
It's one more over, Rick.
I found it in my packet as well. Here we go. Okay. I move that we recommend that we recommend the city council approve the adoption of ordinance to rezone the subject property as shown and legally described in Exhibits A and B from RT 5.4 Residential to RT 5.4 Residential slash NC-A Aspire Neighborhood Character Overway.
Great. Motion made by Rick. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Shane. All righty. Does anybody want to start us out here? Go ahead, Rick.
You know, I'm kind of with Dave on, Dave Loomis on this. You know, I you know, I feel like we're being, in some ways, pushed to increase density, which we know we need. I mean, that, there's no doubt about it. The only way to get affordable housing is to have more housing, more supply. But I just have issues with this. I feel like there needs to be a sort of a transition between urban and rural when we place a subdivision in an area that's not part of the city and annexes the city. I know annexation's done deal, and we're not commenting on it. But I, like Dave, have a real issue with the 50-foot from the, from a watermark buffer. It just doesn't seem like enough. County regulations would be 175 feet. So changing it to city just leaves that alone, leaves that, it's gone. I think it's, I kind of agree, it's a little too dense. But, I mean, the biggest issue I have is it seems to cut off part of the river. The people, I know there's a trail there, but there's not, that's, that's the skinniest, smallest park, I think, that you've ever, you've ever seen. And I just really have some issues. I, I mean, I've read the letters from Audubon, I've read the letters from the county, and I think the developer is just blowing, just blowing past those. And I think that there, there wasn't a lot of compromise in this project. I think there wasn't a lot of compromise with East Missoulians. And I just don't sense that, I mean, you can see from the level of opposition that this has. I just really have some difficulties with it, so.
Great. Thank you, Rick. Anybody else want to jump in, or I can take a stab here? Oh, all right, all right. Okay, so this might be a little disjointed. My notes are kind of all over the place. I think the one thing that I wanted to start with addressing is is trying to make sure that the public understands that you're not alone in your feelings, right? You're not alone as a neighborhood being confronted by development. There's only probably two neighborhoods within the entire city that don't see development. We all probably know which ones those are. The rest of us are being impacted by development all the time. We are reviewing subdivisions and rezones on a continual basis that are impacting, you know, local residents, my neighborhood included. I'm in the River Road neighborhood. And the concerns raised here, traffic, view shed, ag lands, there's something that we're all having to wrestle with. And for me, what I have developed over my time on this board is, is some bright lines, because it is so consistent that we are looking at developments that either don't have the infrastructure or the infrastructure's going to be there, you know, like, it just, infrastructure is always lagging behind our development. That's just the bed we've been laid in, right? Like, that is just how it is. And so I just, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that you're not alone in your feelings, right? And the hardships that you're feeling, right? Like, traffic density without new developments in our neighborhood is up, I wish I knew how much. I wish there was a traffic study. And it's not even, it's only because they've redone the roads and people are taking shortcuts. That's it. That's the only reason, is shortcuts. And yet, I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt that traffic is up significantly. So we're hearing you. I'm hearing you on that, and I feel your pain. So I have a, I have a couple of questions here that I wanted to get at. So Brian, I'm just, I'm curious. Earlier, you were talking about the county commissioners voted on that last, you know, like subdivision that was like 7.1. I can't quite remember the numbers. But that was with 50-foot setbacks. And I'm curious how it was that you guys got to 50-foot setbacks within the county approval system, rather than the 175 or the, you know, that, that larger one?
Brian Throckmorton, 406 Engineering. So remember, this has been years, right? So those new setbacks are one year old. We're at this three and a half years.
Okay, I got it. I got it.
So, yeah, so that, and it was eight and a half dwelling units an acre, but that's the biggest thing is county said that this looks good, we're good with this, so we'll lift the one-foot no-access strip.
Okay, so the rezone, the redoing of the code changed those setbacks. Okay.
Correct. That's, that's after we got them to say, looks good.
Okay, absolutely. All right. That makes more sense.
No, because the new zoning went in last year, one year ago, is all.
I mean, I can't speak to the timeline of when the county's code reform got finalized.
Okay. Yeah, well, they, because we went through and looked, but I mean, the county said good on what we had, so. But I do know through the process that zoning was not in place when we originally brought all this up, so.
Yes, okay. All right, great. Thank you. And I see your hand, Shane, but I'm just going to keep, keep plowing along here. Okay, let me see. Okay, so I wanted to try and address the question around the long block, I think that's on the water side, and the four walk-throughs is, you know, matter of math. Yeah, Brian, or I guess Brian, you're probably the best to answer that. Why not four walk-throughs based on math?
Yeah, the walk-throughs are at where the roads come in. So it's to make nice crosswalks, so when you walk down the east and west streets, you just go into the, to where the river would be.
Okay.
So it isn't, it isn't perfect, but it makes a lot nicer layout. We originally had them spread out a little more, but it was just kind of haphazard through there. And this makes to where, when you're walking down the street, you can continue the river.
Okay, great.
If I could just add one thing, Dave De Grandpree, there actually is a fourth one, but it doesn't split the lot. It's at the very southern end.
Okay.
But there, a fourth one would be, yeah, the very southern end, it would lead to the trail from Aspire Drive. It just isn't a mitigation measure, quote unquote, to break up the block.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, and then this should be another straightforward one from questions from the public. Did the traffic, I don't know that it would, but is the traffic study able to include construction impact in its, like, timeline and its projections? And Brian's coming up.
Yeah, this is Troy Monroe.
Troy, if you want to go too, but I can also, so the traffic study, remember, is at full buildout. So that's, you know, so it doesn't have construction in it, but you have to remember, when construction's going on, it also isn't at full buildout. So the traffic study is truly incorporated for when everything, every house is completely occupied. At that point, then the traffic study comes through. So those, you know, I think one of the other questions was, where does the 2,000 that go to Summers? It's as they leave the subdivision. So I think it's 22, 2,200 and something. Total traffic is created by the subdivision, 10% north, 90% south, and that's at each exit. So that's what the subdivision produces.
Okay, great. Troy, did you, do you have anything to add?
No, Brian did a good job. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay. Okay, so I think might have to come back around and make sure we got all the questions. So in looking at this, it feels to me like also the really big question mark here is the riparian zone and its impact. And that's just not really, not really, it's just not within the purview of this board to ask that question. It is not within my ability to evaluate that. The only thing that I can look at is the subdivision. And then the following, excuse me, the variances that come along with that, and then the plat. So to me, a central piece of this is around the annexation question and where that is going to land. And then to follow that, I would also like to kind of reiterate, one of my typical comments is that I believe that this is yet another development that should stand out to us as our city and our staff as an example of what we need our future code to do. And that is to provide that flexibility in order for the developers to meet their needs, as well as trying to meet concerns of the public. And in my ideal world, that new code would come up with a flexibility to create a little larger riparian zone, so that everybody's, you know, like, voices can feel better heard. And I would also just like to address, I know it's difficult to not to view these proceedings and feel like that there's to view these proceedings and feel like that there's an us against them, but I really wanna assure folks that that is, that there is no us against them. We are all trying to work towards what is the best for our community. And at the very least, on this planning board, right? There is, there's no collusion. I have no relationship with Dave DeGrandprey outside of these meetings. Nobody is strong-arming me into doing anything. And I, I just wanna make sure that that's really clear to everybody. And I also wanna make sure that everybody is clear that I believe that 406 Engineering is really trying to make an effort. And to me, that is visible in the steps that they've taken, the 35 conditions that are a part of this. You don't see other developers from Georgia making the types of overtures of like trying to do Summers Road. And so I know that this, this development is hard and difficult. I would like to just lay that out there, that 406 Engineering is really making an effort to try and meet the community's needs. And I know that it doesn't always feel that way, particularly once you're in a neighborhood. And I'm, I'm struggling with how really, what, to, you know, how to vote on this. I don't see a lot of, I don't have any of my typical bright lines that I look to within public safety for voting no. The, you know, the big piece of this in the rezone is, is, is an overlay. It's the overlay that is the big change. And that, to me, makes for a better development. And so, I, I think I may be leaning towards voting in favor of this. And with that, I'm gonna let it be so I can look through my notes and see and make sure I've tried to get to everybody's questions. And I'm gonna let Shane go ahead here.
Uh, thanks Sean. Yeah, this is, I mean, we're gonna be voting on 10 or 11 things here. So, I guess, I tend to be in favor with this first motion. I think that there's gonna be a few down the line that I'm not in favor of. So maybe I'll just keep my, well, maybe, maybe I'll try to speak broadly. I, I tend to, you know, defer to experts when it comes to this riparian zone, and that seems to be a plating issue. So, in, in my mind, most of, a lot of my concern comes down to what will ultimately be our final motion of the evening in terms of the plat and the riparian zone. The RT 5.4, the overlay, concerns me less. So I, I think I intend to vote in favor of this current motion that is on the table. Reflecting back on some of the variances that are in between this current motion and when we get down to approving, or, you know, voting on subdivision, you know, I, I think Dave pointed out that, you know, it's hard to go back and, you know, retroactively bring things up to city standards, which gives me honestly the most pause in a lot of ways to approving some of the variances. And, you know, I, I think a 62-foot right-of-way is probably fine. You know, just to be totally honest with you. The 54 feet gives me a little bit of pause in some of the block length, you know, the block length along the river doesn't really give me all that much pause, but some of the other areas do. And I, I would like there to potentially be some effort to dedicate a piece of right-of-way or, you know, something that would connect in on the west side through the park in the future. So I, I'm unsure if that needs to be platted right now or, or how that works. Once it becomes city property in the form of a park, maybe that can just all happen internally. I guess the, I, I agree with Rick that the, you know, the park on the east side adjacent to the river is as nice as it would be, nice, uh, next to the river. It is the longest, skinniest park you've ever seen, and it would be better if, if it was a little bit wider. The park on the west side of the property seems to be, I, I do agree that adjoining it to the neighboring park is a good idea. But a lot of the area seems to be just leftover space that was frankly undevelopable, you know, due to grades. And that's the reason we can't get a sidewalk through, which is the basis of one of the variances. And it does seem like there could be some reconfiguration in that area to, one, make a better park and, and get a sidewalk to go through. So, I guess that's all to say that on this particular motion that is on the table, I intend to support it, but I wanted to give some commentary on the upcoming motions that are likely ahead of us.
Great, thank you Shane. Does anybody else got any comments? I got a couple of questions I missed here. I apologize, I don't normally talk this much, but there's not very many of us here, so.
Sorry, I can't raise my hand for some reason, but I'm raising my hand.
Okay, sorry Lynn, go right ahead.
Just a comment on this one, I'm planning to not vote in favor of it. And mainly because I feel like the overlay just decreases setbacks and makes it less livable, honestly, and creates a need for other variances. So it's also creates, it allows the multi-family dwellings, which creates the block variance, which creates the alley variance, the street variance. And so it's just basically adding variances, so that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you Lynn. Dave, do you have some feedback on that? I'm curious about your thoughts on that.
Well, I certainly see Lynn's point. You know, it's true, as I mentioned earlier, that if, if that southern block which has the multi-dwelling lots, if that were just one lot and not 10 lots, then no, you wouldn't need certain variances. Because you could develop apartment, you know, an apartment complex essentially on one lot, and you wouldn't have these separate lots with individual kind of townhome-type structures. So, you know, I mean, the overlay is a way to, like I mentioned earlier, really the idea is it's a way to provide some flexibility, some variation in structure types. Right now, the RT 5.4 zoning, it, it's very limited in the types of structures that are allowed, and it's certainly, you know, a more urban environment. If you have different, you know, a mixture of views or a mixture of housing types, that's also, you know, the city has certain, quote unquote, lenses that we're trying to look through according to our strategic plan. This is a little different from the growth policy, but one of those is, it's not accessibility, kind of affordability, equity is what I'm trying to say. And so what that means in this context is having different housing types for different segments of the market. So you, in this case, you'd have, you know, some larger homes, more expensive homes probably along the river and on some of the larger lots. You'd also have some apartments, and that, that helps to achieve some of the city's goals, so. That's why, and also, you know, with the reduced setbacks, I think, you know, again, it's a more urban environment, and that's, you know, density is, this infill density idea is, is really what the city's growth policy, or one of the things that the city's growth policy is all about. I don't wanna stress, or I don't mean to stress that it's all about housing. There are certainly other goals, livability, quality of life, you know, things like that. But in any event, I think it would be, would be helpful to take a vote on the first motion to get things started, and then we could go through the variances one by one and, and take those on. Is that a good way to proceed?
Absolutely, I think.
Mind if I comment just a little on the character overlay too?
Sure, absolutely.
So, one thing too, you know, the duplexes are allowed, so it, it does, you know, the neighborhood character overlay allows us to do more single-family rather than duplexes with the same density. So if you have a duplex and you have 10, 10-foot on the side, but you have zero in the middle, there's still that same spacing or the width needed for two, two buildings. So by having a neighbor character overlay, you're allowing to have single-family homes, which is what residents of East Missoula said that they would prefer more is individual, single-family homes. This allows that within the same footprint width area where you wouldn't really have that as much. You would have more of a duplex, which is allowed in, in the zoning without the overlay. So it doesn't change the density, it just allows, like Dave said, more flexibility for us to put single-family homes in the same area. And then the multifamily is the addition. Again, not with the density, but having the multifamily allows us to have this variety. And we see this all the time where we don't wanna keep this one carbon copy, same culture throughout an entire 35-acre area. You know, socio-economics, the city has wanted to blend that lately. They really, they want, you know, apartment buildings mixed in with single-family houses and kind of a mix of sizes, single-family in between. This character overlay allows that mix so that a variety of people can live in the subdivision, not just one exact type. So that is one reason that it helps us. It gives us just more flexibility to have the single family as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, unless somebody else has something else, let's go ahead and bring this first motion to a vote. Roll call, vote please, Annalysia.
Roll call, vote. Lynn Davis?
No.
Shane Morrisey?
Yes.
Dave Loomis?
No.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And the motion fails with three no's, two yeses.
Okay.
Does that render the variances moot, or do we still need to vote on them?
No, I think it's, it's best if we go through them and discuss them and vote on them. In the past, what we have encountered is that it's very much needed. Go ahead Rick.
I'm ready.
Okay.
For number two.
Number two.
Okay. I move that we recommend the city council approve a variance from city subdivision regulations, Article 3, Section 3-020.2, Table .2A, to allow Aspire Loop, Hartwood Place, Jumbo Drive, Crosscut Way, Summers Street onsite, and a portion of Waterside Drive onsite to have a 62-foot right-of-way easement instead of the 70 feet for the low-density urban local street type.
Motion made by Rick, do we have a second? Shane, your hand's up.
I'll second.
Seconded by Shane. Okay, alright Shane, go ahead with your questions.
Not a question, I, I think that I intend to support this one. This seems like we can fit everything that we need within this street type within the 62 feet, so I intend to support this variance.
Great, thank you Shane. Anybody else feel like they need to weigh in? Okay, I'm gonna take one second. So one of the questions I missed, sound wall considered? We didn't address that at all, has that been considered in any way?
In my presentation, it was on both sides.
Oh, okay. How about very briefly, just, it was, you know, what little, just a little bit to answer that question again?
Yeah, so, you know, the idea was that garages and everything in the back of the multifamily with soundproof construction, triple-pane windows, double drywall.
That would be the wall.
Yeah, that would be the wall. And then all the front doors opening to the cottage court in, in the front. So that multifamily would act as a sound wall, the back of it, which is the garage, and then all the entrance would be in the front.
Okay, and just to clarify that person's question, they were thinking more like the sound wall that is, whatever, on the street going over the rattlesnake bridges and the roundabouts? Anything like that considered?
Not, not as much. You know, we'd have to look at heights and everything. We were definitely trees along there as well. So vegetation, try and work with the city on the best type of vegetation for soundproofing as well.
Okay, alright, just trying to get at that. Alright, are we ready for a vote here? Anybody? Alright, it looks like it. Let's go ahead, Annalysia, roll call, vote please.
Roll call, vote. Lynn Davis?
No.
Shane Morrisey?
Yes.
Dave Loomis?
No, no, sorry.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And the motion fails with three no's, two yeses.
Alright, thank you.
Before we move on, would it be possible to get some comments as to why that, why the people who voted against did? Lynn, Rick, Dave, any, any? Sean, did you vote no also?
Uh, no, I voted yes. Lynn, go ahead, and then Rick.
Thank you, so, we, we have standards for roads that are in our subdivision code, and I feel like they should be followed. And also on Summers Street's improvements at the 70 feet. Because it's, you know, I haven't been on this board very long, but I feel like it's a common thing to not follow what the subdivision code is. So I would vote in favor of a change to the code and then follow the code. So I, I don't think a variance is warranted because then we end up with streets that aren't correct in the long term, like, so. It's my opinion.
Great, thank you Lynn, go ahead Rick.
Sure. If I don't agree with the Aspire Neighborhood Character Overlay, the density or the riparian buffer, even though they're all lawful, but I don't think they fit the area, I don't think there are any dense, house densities on the river. I mean, I looked at Google Maps, there, that there aren't any along the Clark Fork. If I don't agree with that overlay, then I can't really agree with any of the variances that are included with overlay. So that's my reasoning.
Alright, thank you Rick. Dave, do you want to add any color to your vote?
Yes, since you're supposed to approve a hardship, and the hardships on these variants are self-named by the applicant. That's why you're probably going to know, variants.
Great, thank you Dave. Okay, and the motion fails three to two. And as we move through these, everybody, let's just keep trying to present our, our opinion and why we're voting, how we are, so that staff has something to work with and, as well as city council when they get to review on this. Okay, does anybody wanna take a stab at the third recommended motion? Anybody besides Rick?
I'll keep going if you want.
Alright, you, you can, you can go ahead Rick.
Till I run out of breath. I move that we recommend the city council approve a variance from city subdivision regulations, Article 3, Section 3-020.2, Table .2A, and 3-020.4.N to allow the northernmost approximately 415 feet of Waterside Drive to have a 54-foot right-of-way easement and one parking lane instead of two.
Great, thank you Rick, do we have a second?
I'll just keep with the theme and second it.
Seconded by Shane. Don't be afraid to chime in, seconding is really easy. Okay, Shane, you wanna leave the discussion off again, your hand's still up. Your hand's still up.
I re-raised it. Uh, I actually intend to vote against this one. Uh, just, you know, uh, the 54 feet does seem too narrow, and, you know, back to, you know, Dave's comments, uh, about, you know, trying to correct things after the fact. Um, yes, sure, there is a road that comes into this that has 54-foot right-of-way, but that's going to need to be addressed in the future, and let's not set ourselves up for failure, um, within this area that we can actually work with, um, from the get-go. So I intend to vote, uh, against this one.
Great, thank you Shane. Anybody else ready to weigh in? Go ahead Lynn. Your, your hand raising function still broken?
Yeah, it's not, I, I click on it, nothing happens. Anyway, old school. Um, I agree with Shane, the same reason, like, build it right the first time, and I, and I feel like it's the right thing to do, and really don't believe that everyone's going to go out Summer Street, so there'll be traffic. It, it just needs to be, um, built to standard to begin with.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll throw my two cents in. Um, boy, of all the variances, this is the, this is one of the toughest. Um, I still haven't even made up my mind on this one. This, uh, yeah, this choke point, um, is challenging. I see the need for it, um, and I, and I get it, because it makes, makes everything else work. But I'm not, I'm not sure how I'm going to land on this. This one is challenging enough that I might, I might vote no. I think there's some sense in maybe re-analyzing this and seeing if there's anything different that we can come up with. Anybody else want to get their thoughts known? Actually, I should just say.
As I'll just say, I agree with everybody else.
Okay, thanks Rick. Uh, we had somebody in-house, um, trying to clarify something, and I was listening to that. One second here. Dave, do you have anything to add? Dave Loomis?
Nothing to add to this, actually.
Okay, um, Dave De Grand Prix, can you add to what the gentleman, um, was referencing? Because I can't open up public comment at this point.
No, I'm not familiar with the covenants of Waters Edge subdivision. I just know that the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way for Waters Edge Drive is 54 feet, and the proposed right-of-way for this section of waterside drive in the Aspire subdivision, 415 feet is also proposed to have that same, uh, that width.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the restricted covenants.
Brian with 406.
Engineering, so, so Andrew's referencing with the one-foot no access ship, we talked about the restricted covenants that went through with density. Part of that was the effort to keep traffic at slow going north through, because if you look at what Waterside Drive is, it's a meandering, slow, little road. So there, we needed to make an effort to calm traffic and reduce the speeds of traffic going north. And so in order to neck that down to 54 feet, which is, we say 54 feet, ours is a much wider section that's already there, so, you know, to transition from a full cross-section to all of a sudden what's there would be a really abrupt end, traffic would be going extremely fast. So this is a method for us with traffic calming to try and reduce it at an intersection, and then also add traffic calming as it goes north to reduce the speed and reduce the flow as it enters the narrow section of what Waterside Drive is. So, so that is in the restricted covenants for us to put an effort in to try and do that. And honestly, it's just good design, to be honest, to not neck it down right at the end. That's not safe.
Yes, thank you for that reminder, sir, and for that recap, Brian. I think we touched on that in the last meeting in a much better way, and we kind of did not hit that tonight. So ideally, that helps, um, anybody in-house or board members. Okay, are we, you got everybody ready for a vote? All right, Annalysia, roll call vote please.
Roll call vote. Lynn Davis?
No.
Shane Morrissey?
No.
Dave Loomis?
No.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And the motion fails with four no's, one yes.
And just to clarify for Dave and the folks here, that last clarification kind of brought me back around to the need, you know, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna vote for the overlay, this makes sense. Okay, um, I can't tell who has their hand up.
I think nobody now. Richard Feifiel.
So she, is that a public comment? Because I can't open that public, public comment.
I believe it is. I believe it is.
Okay, so, um, Richard, I apologize, but we've had our public comment period. I, I cannot open that back up now. We are in the process of doing motions and voting. So just to let you know that I see your hand up there, I'm not trying to ignore you.
This is not public commentary. This is parliamentary procedure. Uh, I am concerned that Mr. Throckmorton gets his response.
Excuse me, sir, you're, um, I, I, I feel for you, but parliament, parli, uh, parliamentary procedure doesn't warrant you interrupting the meeting. Um, so I'm going to have to ask you to undo that.
Nor does it warrant Mr. Throckmorton to be able to respond to your concerns. He already had his time to do so. Are you going to let East Missoulians respond?
Just to try and address what you're saying, um, sir, part of this process is getting questions answered, um, and to get questions answered, we need to rely on our staff who are making presentation to us, and the developers as well. So, part of the process for us as board members to get as much information as we can, not only for ourselves, but to try and answer the questions of the people in the public, is to bring the developer back up or to ask our city staff whether or not they can address those questions so that we can get clarification on that. That is why Brian Throckmorton keeps coming up to respond to our questions, because we're trying to understand things better so that we can make informed decisions to the best of our ability. Okay. My apologies, folks. It's always, uh, these, these harder ones are tough. There's no doubt about it. Okay, that motion fails as well, which brings us to our fourth variance. Anybody want to take a stab at it?
I'll take one, Rick. I'll recommend city council approve a variance from city subdivision regulations, Article Three, Section Three dash zero two zero, uh, dot two, Table, uh, Point Two A, to allow a sidewalk on only one side of the street for approximately 460 feet along the northwest corner of Aspire Loop.
And I'll second it this time.
Great, thank you gentlemen. I appreciate your efforts to keep us rolling here. Okay, um...
Could I provide just a bit of clarification on one thing?
Absolutely. Dave, go ahead.
Comment that was made earlier, and I want to show you something. It's going to take me just a second to get back to it. Okay, so, this is the variance request, so it's a block length, again, along the west side of... I think I'm on the right one.
We're on number four. Sorry.
Okay, and so Shane, I think, I think it was you who mentioned, or you see the black line along the west side of the lots? And as you're traveling north, it runs, I guess, east-west. There is a, a condition of approval recommends as mitigation for this, that there be a paved pathway that runs along the southern end of the park. That pathway actually is also proposed to be used. Along the west side of this property is a sewer main, and so Public Works and Mobility from the city has requested there, there be a 12-foot access road along the edge of these lots, the back of these lots, but that it also be paved along, I guess, the northernmost section where it connects back to the road and runs all the way out to Robinson Street. So I think, I think it was Shane who mentioned having a connection out the park through Canyon View Park, and that is, that's a proposed condition of approval. So, uh, I, if I didn't hear you right, let me know, um, I'm just trying to address that comment.
I just want to make sure that we're actually on the right one. Let me... Can you go back to your, um, variance request?
Do you mean the, the motion itself?
Yeah.
We go. So I believe it's number five.
No, I, I, I just read number four.
All right, I'm wrong, sorry.
That's okay, we'll have it covered for number five.
Yeah, uh, so, Sean, do you mind if I, uh, give my little commentary here?
No, please go right in.
Uh, I, I don't necessarily have anything wrong with the variance request in, um, here, uh, other than the fact that it, um, again, as, there, there doesn't seem to be a need for a sidewalk on, um, on the west side of, of the road in that area. That being said, the, the, the hardship displayed here is, is that it's a topographical thing, which is really just that they put the road right at the heel of the hill, um, if you will, and then, yes, sure, the sidewalk would be elevated. It still seems to make sense to grant the variance in this instance, to me, um, at least, uh, but it does seem a little, the hardship seems a little contrived, um, in a lot of ways. Um, I, I still believe that I intend to support the variance, I suppose, um, and that it wouldn't connect to anything real, um, but, uh, I, I do think that there should potentially be, uh, within the plat, a reconfiguration of this to allow it to actually connect to something.
Great, thank you Shane. Anybody else? Remember, we need some context for your votes, even if it's very simple. Go ahead, Rick.
Well, my context remains the same. That is that if I don't approve the overlay, I don't approve the variances. And, I mean, some of these make sense in the, in the context of the, of the overlay, but, um, but for me, I don't, I'm, I'm not in favor of the overlay, so.
Copy that, thank you. Anybody else before we move to the vote here? Okay, Annalysia, let's go ahead and do a vote.
Roll call vote. Lynn Davis?
Yes.
Shane Morrissey?
Uh, yes.
Dave Loomis?
No.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And the motion passes through, with three yeses, two no's.
Great, thank you. Dave, for my context, it was really similar to Shane's. Okay, we're, we're at halfway here, and, uh, so, anybody want to take a stab at number five?
I guess I already opened this can of worms, so I'll keep rolling for a little bit. Um, recommend city council approve a variance from city subdivision regulations, Article Three, Section Three dash zero three zero dot two A, parentheses two, to allow the block serving lots one through 18, and 103 to 113 to exceed the maximum 480-foot block length requirement.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Great, seconded by Rick. I don't know, this, this just makes sense, given, given the design and the overlay, so I think I'll be supporting this as well. Go ahead Shane.
Uh, yeah, I, I intend to support this one as well. Um, it seems to make sense, given the context. Thanks.
Anybody else before we move to a vote? Okay, seeing no hands, Annalysia, roll call vote please.
Roll call vote. Lynn Davis?
Yes.
Shane Morrissey?
Yes.
Dave Loomis?
No.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And the motion passes with three yeses, two no's.
Okay, moving right along here, number six. I would read that if I could.
I'll go for it. Uh, I'll recommend city council approve a variance from city subdivision regulations, Article Three, Section Three dash zero three zero dot two A, parentheses two, to allow the block serving lots 19 to 31, 114 to 123, and 47 to 48 to exceed the maximum 480-foot block length requirement.
Do we have a second?
And I'll second it again.
Great, seconded by Rick. Motion made by Shane. Go ahead.
May I ask that, uh, Dave, I know that this is painful, but would you mind going to a diagram of this particular, um, section?
This is the one, correct?
Yeah, that looks right.
And then here's another one as well, it shows kind of a larger context.
Thanks, Dave.
Sorry, raised my hand.
I'm sorry Lynn, I, you haven't been on my screen for a while. Probably try and talk, and then you'll come up so I can see you.
Okay, I don't know. Can you hear me?
I can, we can, we can.
Okay. Um, so, I would vote no on this one. I feel like the hardship is created by the developer, part of the plan, and they could put a street in without a problem.
Great, thank you Lynn. Anybody else? Before we move to a vote here? Go ahead Shane.
Um, this, this one doesn't bother me as much, and I guess I do want to, wanted to make a comment, I think, on, you know, you know, right-of-way width versus road width and, in relation to traffic calming, and, you know, there are two different things in my mind. I mean, obviously, there's, you know, we're dedicating, there's a right-of-way, you know, that we're dedicating. The, the way that we start to institute traffic calming is through, not necessarily related exactly to the right-of-way width. You know, within a seventy-foot right-of-way, just as a, for instance, you can still put in a twenty-foot road, which will institute more traffic calming. And so, as, they are related in some ways, but they're not, they're not necessarily, like, tied to each other, exactly. Like, you can still, you know, neck things down and create safe crossings and, you know, make the road less wide within a wider right-of-way. So I suppose that that's maybe in just response to, like, you know, wider right-of-way means faster traffic. It doesn't necessarily mean that, per se. Like, you could still have a different road standard within a wider right-of-way. That being said, this one bothers me less, and I suppose that I intend to support this, this variance in that it seems to be reasonable access to all the properties, and the length of the block is, does seem somewhat reasonable, and then there is pedestrian access through the middle of it, so I intend to support it.
Great, thank you Shane. Any other comments from board members? Okay, my own two cents is pretty similar to Shane's. I think this makes sense and doesn't raise any huge concerns for me. You know, something brought up earlier was that we have regulations and that we should follow them. And when we have pieces of property that are just not square, you know, we gotta, we gotta get inventive and figure out things. And that's where we see a lot of variances, in my experience. You know, we don't see a lot when we have lots of space and, you know, we're out of the Y, but in these type of situations, in order to make it work, there's typically some variances that have to go with it. Okay, it's not seeing anybody else looking to chime in, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Lynn Davis?
No.
Shane Morrissey?
Yes.
Dave Loomis?
No.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And the motion passes with three noes, two yeses.
Motion fails.
Fails.
With three noes and two yeses. It's okay, it's getting late.
Sean, did you just vote yes to the motion or no?
I, I voted yes. Three, it came out three to two.
Thank you.
Okay, plugging away here, folks. And board members, we got one more to go, we can't give up tonight, so hang with us. Number seven, right?
I will recommend City Council approve a variance from city subdivision regulations, Article Three, Section Three dash zero-three-zero dot two A, parentheses two, to allow the block serving lots thirty-two to forty-six and sixty-eight to eighty-seven to exceed the maximum four hundred and eighty-foot block length requirement. And again, I'd ask Dave, after we have a second, to throw that one up on the screen, if possible, please.
Do we have a second?
I can second.
Seconded by Lynn, beat you to it, Rick. Okay, motion by Shane, seconded by Lynn, and Dave is working on the slide. Okay, go ahead Shane.
Sorry, I feel like I'm talking a lot, but I feel like I need to justify myself or my counter, my votes. Again, I, I think, actually on this one, I think I would defer to city staff on this. It's obviously the case that the, any sort of road going through there would connect to nothing but the river. And whether or not we want access to the river and where we want access to the river, that seems to be a Parks and Rec, you know, issue, which they have weighed in on, in this application. So I intend to support this one. You know, I do know that creating little cow trails down to the river can be an issue. We don't want there to be too many, so focusing them into areas that we can control seems like the, the best way possible to prevent any sort of negative impacts to, to the river and to the riparian area. So I intend to support this one, just because it is staff's recommendation.
Great, thank you, and, you know, I think you're doing a great job. You're showing a great example of how we gotta do our job. Anybody else? All right, seeing no's and the shake of heads, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. I'm pretty much with Shane. This seems to make sense, given, given what we have in front of us. Annalysia, please.
Roll call vote, Lynn Davis?
No.
Shane Morrissey?
Yes.
Dave Loomis?
No.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And the motion fails with three noes, two yeses.
Okay.
Shane, you want me to motion for a little bit?
Go for it.
Okay, are we on eight?
Yes, sir.
I think we're on eight.
Eight, okay. I move that we recommend the City Council approve a variance from city subdivision regulations, Article Three, Section Three dash zero-three-zero dot one, dot C, parentheses three, to allow lots sixty-two, sixty-five, and sixty-six to abut and have access to an alley instead of a public or private street or road.
Great, thank you. Rick, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Shane. All right, go ahead Shane.
I, I think this is another one I intend to support. I don't think everything needs to abut a road, you know, philosophically. And if we do end up, you know, with some little cottage court areas here, I think that would be a fine, this would be a fine place for it. So I intend to support this one. It does feel like it would be an appropriate solution here, and, yeah, I intend to support this one.
Thank you Shane, and, just to be brief, pretty much along the same lines as Shane there, this, you know, seems appropriate. Any other comments from Platte? Go ahead Lynn.
Um, I would just say that I don't agree with the overlay, so I'm not going to vote yes for this.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Annalysia, please.
Roll call vote, Lynn Davis?
No.
Shane Morrissey?
Yes.
Dave Loomis?
No.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And the motion fails with three noes, two yeses.
All right, we're almost there. Number nine.
Okay, I move that we recommend the City Council approve a variance from city subdivision regulations, Article Three, Section Three dash zero-three-zero dot two dot A, parentheses two, to allow the block serving lots fifty-eight through sixty-seven to exceed the maximum four, four hundred and eighty-foot block length requirement.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lynn, thank you.
May we have the diagram of this one, please?
Well, for me, it seems hard to vote for the last one and not vote for this one, so it all seems to make sense if I support this little triangle of a development, so that's where I'm at. Anybody else? Got any input? Okay, Annalysia, can we have a vote, please?
Roll call vote, Lynn Davis?
No.
Shane Morrissey?
Yes.
Dave Loomis?
No.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And the motion fails with three noes, two yeses.
Okay, all right, now we're to the last one, and this, this might be a biggie here.
Okay, um, I move that we recommend the City Council approve the Aspire Phase subdivision preliminary plat application, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you Shane, seconded by Shane. All right, does anybody want to kick us off? Dave, please, Dave Loomis, please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I'm pretty disappointed that the developers and city staff did not work more closely and listen to the residents, the county, and resource experts, such as Audubon. I believe a better redesign would result in either fewer or even no variances, and so this is not the right subdivision, and that's why I can't work for it.
Great, thank you Dave. Let's see. I got Rick next.
Yeah, what he said, but I would also, you know, add that I don't feel it fits the surrounding area. I do know the developer is not, it's not at maximum density for this project, but it's still too dense to me, and I think that density is what's causing all the variances. And, you know, between both density and the riparian buffer, I just have issues with it. And in that respect, I agree. I mean, I think that there's a compromise between the residents and the developer, or there could be. I don't know that anybody's ever happy with development that happens near them, but this is a, it's, it's, it's a mixed world development town, and I think we're applying an urban neighborhood to it, and I'm just having some issues with that.
Great, thank you Rick. Anybody else? Go ahead Lynn.
I agree with what's been said, thank you. And I feel like the design creates variances, and so once someone buys a property, the shape and size are known, and then we're trying to fit the development into the maximum housing with all these variances. So I could kind of agree with Dave in that there could be a better plan, so there's less variances and it meets more of the normal subdivision standards or code regulations, sorry. But that's my thoughts, so, no.
Great, thank you Lynn, go ahead Shane.
Um, on this one, I, I think I tipped my hat to this earlier, I intend to vote no on this also. I do believe that the plat should be revisited in some ways. While I do, and obviously on the record, have agreed with some of the variances, there are too many here, and I do think that a better design of this, of this neighborhood could result in, in a, in happier neighbors and also something that meets both the current county regulations and the future, potentially future city regulations. So I do think that we need to find some balance there, and it does feel like it's going a little too far beyond where, where this neighborhood is right now, and, yeah, maybe I'll just leave it at that. There's just a little too much that is, not only pushing beyond the, the county code, but pushing beyond the, the proposed city codes here, so I, I intend to vote no for this.
Great, thank you Shane. Anybody? Oh, I think maybe that is, well, anybody else? Okay, um, let's see. So I think with the plat application, this is the one place where that riparian buffer zone, I'm struggling with it. And I know I've supported everything above, but I think that is, you know, the one, the one place within this proposal that we have the most solid conflict that I don't know is resolvable in any way. But I think I'm leaning towards no with this final recommendation as well. Does anybody else have anything before we move to a vote? Okay, not seeing anything. Annalysia, please.
Roll call vote, Lynn Davis?
No.
Shane Morrissey?
No.
Dave Loomis?
No.
Rick Hall?
No.
Sean McCoy?
No.
And it is unanimous, the motion fails.
Okay, all right, everybody, so that brings us to the end of this marathon hearing. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. For you folks in the public, we are a very tough hurdle. Your, your real challenge is coming up with city council. That is where the annexation process will take place, and again, we are usually a lot tougher than they are as far as our review process, so just, you know, you gotta keep working at it as hard as you can. Appreciate everybody from 406 Engineering showing up and doing all your guys' due diligence as well. I know this is hard, and hopefully this is just part of the process getting us to where we can all have the development and the subdivisions that we're looking for as a community. Okay, alright, thanks Dave, thanks Brian, appreciate everybody here. We have one more hearing, folks, and hopefully the change to our agenda makes more sense now that we've dropped that presentation. Shane, go ahead.
May I ask for a quick potty break?
Absolutely. Can we do five minutes? Is five minutes enough for everybody? Okay, alright, we'll take a five-minute break and be right back. Okay, sorry folks, I got, um, I got more than this going on here at the moment. Turns out my family, my desk got COVID, not me, but my wife. Okay, um, alright, so our next hearing is rezone of 725 West Central Avenue and 715 West Central Avenue. We have John Sand, Associate Planner with the City of Missoula, presenting for us tonight. John, are you still with us?
Oh, I sure am, thank you.
Oh boy, thanks. Um, and, well, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I'm gonna say-
He just cut out.
Yeah, talk about a cliffhanger.
I'm gonna say and then nothing.
Sorry, my mic died. This should be a straightforward one, and feel free to lean into brevity there, John.
I sure will, and I only have one motion, so that's great. Thank you Chair, good evening. My name's John Sand, I'm a planner with current planning at the City of Missoula. Development Services has received a request from IMAG Corp. representing Eagle Nest Estates to rezone properties addressed 715 and 725 West Central Avenue. The properties are proposed to be rezoned from RM135 residential multi-dwelling to B22 community business. This resulting, this rezoning would result in a standard zoning district under Title 20, which cannot be conditioned. Standard zoning districts must apply the same requirements to all parcels within the same zoning district equally. Subject properties are located at 715, 725 West Central Avenue, two blocks north of South Avenue between Bo and Bancroft Streets. South Side Lions Park is across the street to the north, and Washington Middle School is to the east. Sentinel High School is to the south, across South Avenue. The parcels are in City Council Ward 4 and in the Rose Park Neighborhood Council. This map shows the surrounding development patterns, including community of mixed use to the west along the Brooks Corridor, residential development to the east, and the high school fairgrounds and parks to the south. Zoomed in, we can see 725 is approximately 17,000 square feet and currently contains one multi-tentac commercial building. Parcel next door, so we're talking about two parcels here, 715 is approximately 5,000 square feet, and also contains one multi-tentac commercial building. The areas surrounding the properties contain detached residents, multifamily residents, and offices. This is a street view from Google Street View, just giving you an idea of existing conditions from Central Avenue. You can see the two commercial buildings attached with the breezeway, while current zoning allows for a few commercial uses such as offices with the current zoning, some of these uses potentially could be legal non-conforming. So here we have our growth policy map. The applicable regional plan is the 2035 RMissoula City, RMissoula City Growth Policy, which recommends a land use designation of neighborhood mixed use. This land use designation is intended to include a mix of neighborhood-serving, commercial services, commercial uses and medium-to-high-density residential development, where city services and infrastructure are readily available. These areas support and help give identity to individual or small groupings of neighborhoods by providing a visible, distinct focal point and serve neighborhood markets at a small scale. Areas designated neighborhood mixed use promote uses such as retail, offices, eating and drinking, entertainment, and medium-to-high residential, medium-to-high residential density. The city growth policy indicates that the following zoning districts are currently relatable zoning districts for this land use designation. These are highlighted in red here. B1 Neighborhood Business, B2 Community Business, and M1 are limited industrial. The proposed B22 zoning district complies with the growth policy recommendations. And as I mentioned before, the current zoning does not comply with this land use designation. Subject part properties in the lower right of the orange L inside the dotted black circle, which is neighborhood mixed use. This growth policy map zoomed out, this is the growth policy map zoomed out, which helps convey the transition zone between the commercial mixed use on Brooks and the greater residential neighborhoods east of Bancroft. The city growth policy calls for a focus inward approach to encourage infill development in the urban core where infrastructure already exists and promotes mixed use, compact development, and enhanced connectivity, while limiting sprawl and promoting efficient use of infrastructure. The community design, housing, and safety and wellness sections of the city growth policy encourage building where there's existing infrastructure and services, especially adequate vehicle and active transportation facilities. The neighborhood mixed use land, land use designation provides a transition zone, as I mentioned, from community mixed use along Brooks to residential to the east. The subject properties are located within the area designated for high-intensity commercial mixed use in the Midtown Master Plan, which is amendment to the growth policy. This land use recommendation supports mixed use, multifamily buildings with vibrant ground floor uses, active frontages, public amenities, and plazas. This rezoning supports the vision of the Midtown Master Plan and growth policy by allowing for mixed use development, additional, and additional commercial uses. But the current proposed zoning allows for multifamily development. A proposed B22 zoning would allow for more uses and mixed use development in the area with the existing infrastructure served by trail sidewalks, neighborhood greenways, and bike lanes. Curbside sidewalk already exists along the parcel frontage, parcel frontages. The subject properties also have alley access for future parking and services. The parcels are currently served by city fire, police, sewer, and water. Additionally, bus stops serving mountain line routes are in the area. The subject properties have curb gutter that five foot curbside sidewalk along the northern boundary, and aside from a portion of the block to the south, the subject properties are located in an area with a complete system of sidewalks leading to transit parks and services. There's no delineated bike infrastructure on Central Avenue, however, there are existing bike lanes on Bancroft Street to the east and South Avenue to the south. An east-west neighborhood greenway corridor is located one block north on Kent. A regional commuter path is located less than a mile away and is accessible via the greenway network. So here's a map of the current zoning, the two parcels. With this request, there's owned RM135 residential multi-dwelling. The neighboring blocks have a mix of RM135, RM145 residential, B11 Neighborhood Business, C14 Neighborhood Commercial, and R54 Residential. The applicant has requested a rezone to B22 Community Business. This map reflects the proposed zoning designation. Here's our standards comparison table. We'll briefly go over this. The RM135 district has a minimum parcel area of 3,000 square feet. B22 Community Business zoning district has no minimum parcel area except a minimum of 3,000 parcel area as required for single-purpose residential and mixed-use buildings. Both parcels are over the 3,000 square foot minimum and would still allow for residential development if so in B22. Both RM135 and B22 allow one dwelling per 1,000 square feet of parcel area. However, B22 does not have a minimum parcel area per unit for vertical mixed-use buildings. Both zoning districts would allow for five dwelling units on the parcel addressed 715 and 17 dwelling units on the parcel addressed 725 West Central Avenue. I'm gonna skip some setback details just to save some time, but basically, setbacks 20, you can see it there, I'm happy to answer any questions about setbacks at the end of this, if there's specific ones. And the height limit as well is something we wanted to point out. Both zoning districts permit detached house, lotline house, townhouse, two-unit house, and multi-dwelling residential building types. Although mixed-use buildings are allowed in RM135, very few non-residential uses are permitted. Vertical mixed uses, vertical mixed-use buildings are prohibited in RM135, but permitted in B22. The P, D22 zoning district allows for substantially more uses and few low-intensity uses like breweries and artisan manufacturing. Again, with the height, I just wanted to point out about that transition zone from the community mixed use, which has a height limit of over 100 feet. the community mixed use, which has a height limit of over a hundred feet and tapering, tapering down to the residential districts to the east, which have thirty or thirty-five foot height requirements. So my next slide is the review criteria. This is the last and the heavy one. So that's recommendations based on the review criteria provided in Title 20. The Title 20 zoning ordinance. Planning Board must base their decision on the review criteria. The conclusions of law are as follows. The requested zoning, rezoning complies with the land use designation and focus inward objectives of the city growth policy, which are permitting commercial and mixed use development where existing infrastructure already exists. The proposed rezoning would allow for the same high-density residential development as the current zoning. The requested rezoning implements recommendations from the Midtown Master Plan, which is an amendment to the growth policy. Future development must comply with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations, which ensures protection of public health, safety, and welfare. The property is served by adequate public services, including city fire, police, sewer, water, and existing multimodal transportation infrastructure, making the property suitable for mixed use and commercial development. Because of the similar setbacks in height standards, provision of light and air will be protected. The height limit in the B22 zoning district creates a reasonable transition zone between the commercial zoning district to the north and west, which I had mentioned, has a hundred and twenty-five foot max to the less intensive residential to the east, which is thirty, thirty-five foot height max. Setbacks are required to protect light and air for abutting parcel zone residential. The business zoning districts are intended to allow for neighborhood-scale commercial development. They allow for less intensive commercial uses than the commercial zoning districts. The rezoning considers compatible urban growth, the character of the district, suitability of uses, and appropriate use of land, which all comply with growth policy recommendations. The growth policy shows a neighborhood mixed use transition zone for this area, which currently contains both residential and commercial development. The existing commercial development on the parcels is more compatible with the proposed B22 district than with the existing residential district, which takes into consideration the value of buildings. The rezoning is in the best interest of the city as the rezoning implements the recommendations of the R-Missoula 2035 growth policy for areas designated neighborhood mixed use, while increasing allowable uses in the area with good access to services and transportation. Our staff recommendation to is Planning Board recommend City Council adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject properties located at 725 West Central Ave and 715 West Central Ave. And legally described as lots five through ten and the east one half of Lot 11 and Block 35 of Home Vale Edition, located in Section 28, Township 13 North, Range 19 West, PMM from RM135 residential multi-dwelling to B22 community business, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. I also wanted to mention no public comment or agency comment was received on this item to our office.
Okay, great. Thanks, John. Joe, I see you're on here. Joe Dennard, do you have anything from IMAG?
Joe Dennard with IMAG. I just want to thank everybody who's here for really an interesting and difficult conversation that I got to be party to. So I appreciate that. Regarding, you know, what's in front of us now. No, I think John laid the groundwork. I'm here for questions if you guys have any. It seems like a fairly straightforward rezone that aligns with all the applicable plans and does exactly what they recommend for this area. So thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you, Joe. Okay. Do, all right, Rick, I see your hands up. Go ahead, Rick.
I know everybody's tired, so I'll try to make it quick. Joe, it says that they intend, there are two different owners. One owner supports the rezone but doesn't know what they're going to do with the property. And the other owner wants to build ground floor retail slash commercial with residences above. Is that basically it? Can you add any more to that?
Yeah, thanks, Rick. Sure, in a nutshell, yes, the existing ground floor commercial or the ground floor commercial is existing. So they're not branching into a new commercial operation. And the one whose mind is not quite made up, I believe, is the dentist that's at 715. It's, it's the most ad-building that's focused on, you know, basically making mixed use with ground floor commercial. I think that's the plan as of now. And, you know, maybe the dentist office pursues that route as well for a mixed use and dentist below, but I don't think they've decided.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any clarifying questions need answered? All righty, not seeing anything. I will let's go ahead and move on to public comment, huh? I think we're ready for that. Am I missing anything? Dave Loomis? You need to make any comments or questions? I can't see you very well, so I'm just gonna make sure I'm not skipping over you, buddy.
Since you asked, Sean, just a little actual comment. This is unique. Probably the most complex, one of the most complex projects for the first hours.
Great, okay. All right, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment then. And we'll throw the instructions up on the board. And for anybody joining us, I'm not reading this tonight. I don't even know why. I'll just use that. While we're waiting for public comment, I will riff on why am I still reading this? I'm almost positive I don't need to. I don't know if it's just more habit at this point or what. Does county commissioners read this? Do they? No, I don't think City Council reads this anymore. I may declare this is the last time I am reading this thing is tonight. Okay. Well, we have nobody in-house and we have nobody joining us online. Am I missing anybody? Okay, all right. We will go ahead and close public comment since we don't seem to have any at this time. If for some reason somebody comes running in here, we'll go ahead and let them talk. Otherwise, we can entertain a motion, just one motion. John, would you please go ahead and get that up on the screen for us? All right, who's the lucky winner?
Should I pick the worst one? Okay. I make a motion to recommend City Council adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject properties located at 725 West Central Avenue and 715 West Central Avenue and legally described as lots five through ten and the east one half of Lot 11 in Block 35 of Home Vale Edition, located Section 28 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, P dot M dot M from RM1-35 residential multi-dwelling to B2-2 community business, based on the findings of facts and conclusions of law in the staff report.
Great, thank you, Lynn, and seconded by Shane, I believe. Okay, I'll jump us off here. I just had a couple of, just a couple of little clarifications. I was curious, John, could you bring up again? Like just a map. I was curious what is behind this? Like there's no rear setbacks with this proposed B22. And I was just curious what is behind these folks? And what? Is that an alley? Do they have an alley there?
Yeah, there's an alley with a twenty-foot right-of-way, and then these are the residential and multi, multi-dwelling unit buildings.
So could they build right up to the right-of-way? Am I understanding that with, you know, with no setbacks? Or how does that fall?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that a likely scenario?
I will, Cassie, refer to that and see if, I'd say no, but she has more experience with that.
Uh, yeah, Cassie Trippard, Planning Supervisor. It definitely could happen. That being said, it sounds like they are planning to reuse the first floor, in which case it's might be more plausible, but they also may just retain the building footprint. If this were entirely new development, our code would typically require parking to be accessed off the alley, which is likely to push a building forward from that rear property line, but it's still a possibility.
Okay. And then also just looking for a little clarification. So minimal parcel size is none. What does that mean? Like if they were to max this out? Is there parking still required? Like, you know, like how does that look if this is maxed out?
John, would you remind them how many units are permitted on each parcel?
Yeah, let me.
I think it's, this is Joe Dennard. I think it's five dwelling units on 715 and seventeen on 725 West Central. And it's, it's, it's the minimum unit. That's the threshold there.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind with that, and we tell people on the sun zoning desk all the time, yes, that is what the zoning allows. However, you still have to meet other requirements of Title 20, such as parking, landscaping, if that's applicable, and then of course setbacks, so.
Okay, great. That's all I had. Anything from anybody else? All right. Anybody wanna tepidly acknowledge their support? I can just get yourselves on the record there. Go ahead, Shane.
Well, I guess I have tepidly indicate my support. Yeah, no, I intend to support this. It seems right for the, you know, for the growth policy, for the neighborhood. Seems like we're moving in this direction, so I intend to support this. Let me ask a real quick follow-up question. So as, it's not directly abutting. From what I'm understanding, when you're abutting a residential district, you still have zero setback on the rear. Is it considered to be abutting a residential neighborhood, even though it is across an alley from residential neighborhood?
So any right-of-way between parcels, that doesn't mean they're abutting. So it's like a way I think of it is there's right-of-way to the north of this parcel where Central runs. And so it's kind of similar like that. And technically, although our zoning maps might not portray this all the time, but technically the right-of-way area is not zoned. So on our maps, it may look like they're abutting. But because technically there's a a strip of right-of-way that is unzoned, the parcels are not abutting if they're across an alley.
Correct. That totally answers the question. Still intend to support it. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, Rick. Then Dave.
Yeah, I intend to support it. I mean, it it's appropriate for the area. There are some fairly old buildings there right now, so. Yeah, seems to make sense to me, so.
Great, thank you, Rick. Go ahead, Dave.
Yep, I agree to support this. First of all, it does meet the growth policy. And the neighborhood mixed use plan, it fits in there, and this project is basically consistent with the neighborhood. The neighborhood's slow-growing and moving along in a slow pace. So this fits in well, and it meets all the tests. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dave. I'll take a quick moment just to echo. I think everybody's hitting the nail on the head with this one. It seems to fit in well and follows the criteria or meets the criteria. Okay. Last chance? All righty, let's go ahead and have a vote, please, Annalysia.
Roll call vote. Lynn Davis?
Yes.
Shane Morrissey?
Yes.
Dave Loomis?
Yes.
Rick Hall?
Yes.
Sean McCoy?
Yes.
And it is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
Sorry, folks, my, my mic just died again. All right, now I'm gonna sing for everybody. No, I'm kidding. You don't want me to sing. I can't sing. Okay, let's bump through this. Good job. Okay. Communications and special presentations got scrubbed, so. No committee reports, no old business, no new business. If I'm wrong about that, somebody holler. Comments from board members. Anything from anybody? Dave, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So I misunderstood today. I thought I had been replaced on the planning board, so I was relaxing here. And luckily, Annalysia got a hold of me, so in order to make the quorum, I agreed to come online and do this. Nevertheless, I want to thank all the board members that I've worked with over the years. I think the county and city, especially the counties, well situated with the planning board that gets to the issues and discusses it in a really calm and good manner. And I appreciate that from my experience over the year from the other side of the table to a planning board, of the good discussion. And anyway, so this would be my last meeting. And so thank you for putting up with me, especially when I like on this last, I mean, the project at East Missoula, oh my goodness. You know, I know I said things that the city took exception to, but my gut feeling is the people in East Missoula need to talk to their commissioners to talk to the city council people about, hold on a minute here. Yeah, so anyway, that's, that's what I appreciate. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate you guys at all.
We're gonna miss you, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. First of all, Dave Loomis, I guess the grandeur left. Thank you very much, Dave, for being willing to sit in tonight. I know there was a little confusion on your last meeting, but that was a huge save. If we had not made quorum tonight, we would be in trouble, I think, as far as our schedule goes. So you are the savior of the day, your last meeting, despite being the leader of opposition for that one, you know, like rezone. You saved the day. And I want to thank you for all of your time on this board. I have, I've enjoyed your insight immensely. It has been so thoughtful and so clear, particularly your perspective as a former planner. So I'm not sure where you're headed or what you're doing in the future, but if you can get on any more planning boards or be a part of anything for this city or wherever you may end up, I highly encourage it, because it is well worth having you here. And, you're welcome. And I hope to see you at the gym. I haven't seen you at the gym in a little while. Okay.
I just want to leave everyone with a laugh. I showed up for the meeting last night and sat there wondering where everyone was, and even called planning and made a fool out of myself, so. It's the problem with being retired, you don't know what day of the week it is.
I hear you.
Sean, are you the only one in the room tonight from the planning board?
I am the only one here, yep. It has been a little lonely.
Sorry to leave you hanging, man.
Oh, it's okay. I was a little jealous as I watched you eat, and I was like, oh, I'm hungry too. No, it was fine. I think it went just fine, other than our one detractor who, parliamentary procedure. Okay, all right, it's late, everybody's tired, let's call it a night, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.